Good evening and welcome to the November 25th meeting of the Plymouth Select Board, pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28, 2025. This meeting will be conducted via remote means and in person. Members of the public who wish to watch this meeting may do so in the following manner: tune into the Local Scene government cable access channels Comcast 9 or Verizon 47 and watch the meeting as it is aired live, or watch the meeting live on the Local Scene website. Members of the public who wish to participate in this meeting may do so by coming in person to the Great Hall at Plymouth Town Hall, which is located on the second floor, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. Or you may do so remotely by clicking the Zoom link, which is posted on our agenda on the website. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. I do so declare, and we will meet tonight regarding 132 Warren Ave, which is leased by Frag Inc., which is Sandy's Restaurant. Lease extension is the subject matter. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Mr. Canty moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ayah Quinto seconds. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Ayah Quinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The board will enter executive session and return at approximately 6:00 p.m.
Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, meeting of the Plymouth Select Board. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to the reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform attendees of any such recordings. I'm not aware of any recordings other than that of the local scene. The Board has just come out of executive session, so to start things off, please join us in the Pledge of the Flag. I have a request from one of our presenters tonight to proceed with his presentation prior to other business, unless there's an objection from the Board. I'd like to welcome Rick Vayo from the Downtown Waterfront District for his update. Mr. Vayo?
There it is. Good evening, thanks for having me in. I didn't know if you wanted me to just give a general update and then handle questions, or how you want to do it?
Yeah, I'll soon update and question.
Okay, and as I expressed, you know, we're more than happy to be doing this on a regular basis. So, the Downtown Waterfront District, as you know, it's a collection of businesses and organizations that reside and operate in the downtown waterfront area. We've come together over the last couple of years, probably last three years, but over the last one year, we've really sort of reorganized, redefined ourselves. Hired marketing manager and a marketing team that reports directly to the DWD Board. So, as a general statement, we feel things are going extremely well, actually better than expected. So, the goal of this organization is to drive business to downtown, and that's drive business to retail businesses, restaurants, cultural centers, art centers, associations, et cetera, et cetera. And when I say drive business, we don't want to just drive business during the summer months. In fact, probably it would be just the opposite. We want things going on in downtown all year long. Our general statement, and I tell this story all the time, I was having a conversation with a restaurant owner in downtown a couple of years ago, and I said, you know, we really need a lot more fine dining and medium dining, let's call it restaurants, in downtown. And he said, oh, no, Rick, we're not even that busy. I'm like, that's my point. We need to have options all the time. What our sort of mantra is, is that if there's someone in Weymouth that's saying to their spouse, do you want to go out to dinner? We don't want them saying that. We say want them saying, where do you want to go out to dinner in Plymouth? And then we have an abundance of choices for them. And the same with our retail offerings in downtown. And I think we've seen over the last two years, the restaurants expand and new restaurants opened up. We have, you know, Anejo, Tumira House, et cetera, et cetera, that have opened up in downtown and doing really well. We have new retail businesses coming in and some on a sort of regional level, and I think there's more to come, which is all great stuff. So, DWD is helping push all that, which with what I would call virtual and physical events all year long. So, a physical event is very simple, right? It's the Harvest Fest that we did a few weeks ago, which by the way, was a phenomenal success. We drove between two and three thousand people into the downtown. It was very simple, it was our first year, it was no frills, but people were thrilled to be there. We had a number of businesses participate with specials going on that day and different offerings. Pumpkin painting for the kids, we collaborated with the elementary schools to do pumpkin painting in the classrooms, and then we had those pumpkins brought to the town hall to be displayed, so the parents and friends and whatnot could come see them. We had music, et cetera, et cetera. Our next big event, I'm trying to talk fast as I see you have a big crowd and I know you want to get on to other things, is the Holiday Stroll, which will take place from the fifth to the seventh. There was a bunch of foolishness on Facebook about how the DWD is taking over the tree lighting and whatnot, and to some extent, that's true, but we're not taking it over in a bad way. What we're trying to do is work with the administration and all of the town, you know, employees that have so successfully handled the tree lighting in the past, take that burden off of them and then dramatically expand it. So that this year, we have various forms of music from the schools, starting at four thirty, running right up until the tree lighting at six o'clock. There'll be the tree lighting, the menorah lighting, there'll be a jazz band after that. There'll be carolers going throughout the downtown, both Friday and Saturday night. Brewster Gardens lighting will be on Saturday night, there'll be a cookie trail on Saturday where people can purchase tickets and go to various restaurants and shops and pick up little bags of cookies. And then it's escaping me what's going on on Sunday, just because I have a lot going on. But now it's a whole weekend event that's driving people to downtown. The lighting display, you know, from the tree to coordinating with the harbor master to hopefully have the lobster trap tree on the dock being lit up, the menorah lighting, and then we have a lighting company lighting up all of downtown. You'll see street closures from, I think it's Howland down to Middle, uh, North Street, to give people a chance to walk around and really enjoy the downtown. So, those are a couple of examples of physical events we're doing, which, one, we've already done, phenomenal success, and again, very early in our career, so to speak. The next one, Holiday Stroll, we expect will be a phenomenal success. I mean, the response on social media has already been fantastic. But then we'll move in over the winter to a series of virtual and physical events. Virtual events, what I mean by that is, it might just be as simple as marketing the hell out of Plymouth for Valentine's Day. the hell out of Plymouth for Valentine's Day. All the shop owners and all the members of DWD coordinating their decorations, and their graphics, and their promotions, so that we can collectively market that to the South Shore. So, when people are looking to go out for Valentine's Day, they have a multitude of options, from, you know, a pub, to a high-end restaurant, to they might just want to stop into a restill shop and pick up a package of chocolate-covered strawberries, or whatever. But everyone will be uniform and coordinated, and that could be the same for, you know, whether it's a spring festival, whether it's St. Patrick's Day. And then as the year progresses, we'll move into things like seafood festivals, and et cetera, et cetera, which I'm not going to bore you with all now, there'll be plenty of times for those updates. But again, contrary to some of the craziness that went on on social media for a few days, the DWD right now is thriving, I think, under the Board's leadership. We have over 50 downtown member, members, and that's growing. We expect that number to be between 70 and 100, early in next year. The businesses seem thrilled with their response, and they're actually, if you know, if you look a year ago, the participation with DWD, in terms of when we did something, would a business participate? It was marginal, it was like pulling teeth. Now, I want to say, on the cookie trail alone, we have 19 businesses participating in downtown. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot. When someone buys a $10 ticket, and they can come down and go to 19 different businesses, it gives them a reason to go to Plymouth, and a reason to enjoy downtown, and then hopefully, what they're saying is, wow, we need to come back, because we just saw so many great restaurants, so many great shops, the people were fantastic, the, you know, carolers were great, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's my somewhat short-winded update. I'll answer whatever questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Veo. Other questions from the Board? Ms. Iaquinto?
I don't have a question so much as a comment. I've been going to your meetings for the last few months, since I, since I joined this Board, and I have to say, it's just so energizing to see the problem-solving, and the brainstorming, and the collaboration of that group, you know, just really helping each other out, coming up with different ideas, to, to improve individual businesses, as well as the downtown. So, thank you, thank you for doing that.
I, I, you know, you're welcome, and, you know, we appreciate the support. You know, again, I think the Board's doing a great job directing things. Christine's doing a phenomenal job in her efforts, and not only working with the marketing team, but directing things, and even boots on the ground. You'll see at every event, she's out there setting things up and whatnot, and she's done a, you know, a fantastic job. And I think you'll see that at Holiday Stroll, really, you know, come together.
Mr. Cohen?
So, it'd be nice, maybe you can touch on when you meet. You obviously get together and have meetings, and times, and dates, and obviously, there are different sources people can go to for getting information, but if they want to get real information in real time, when do you meet, and what are the times you?
We, we meet at the Town Hall, we meet once a month. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you what the, it, it's usually a Wednesday morning at 9 o'clock, but I can give you a full schedule.
Yeah, that'd be great if you let people know, so that, you know, this opportunity to update us on, and on the committee's activities, obviously, reaching out to the Village Center, from the businesses to the residents, that obviously, that real-time meeting, like my, like other people, I've had the chance to attend, and you learn a great deal at these meetings, so.
Sure.
Getting information from the source might be one of the ways of combating having to manage those things that you referenced.
Yeah, no, we can get that to you with a full schedule. I mean, sometimes those meetings shift, or we have additional meetings, but we can get you the, you know, the base schedule. And also point to the DWD website, as well as Instagram, Facebook, I mean, we're, you know, we're out there pushing out information on a daily, you know, daily basis.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Great. Thank you for being here, Mr. Veo.
No problem.
We'll definitely invite you back in the near future to hear how well, I'm sure, all of the festivities go for the holiday season, and what you've got planned for the coming months.
Yeah, more than happy to come back whenever you need me.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll return to regular order. First, we'll address licenses. We have a pledge of license for liquor, vehicle-for-hire operator new, one-day all-alcohol license, pleasure of the Board.
Make a motion to approve the listed licenses as a group?
Mr. Canty makes the motion, is there a second?
I will second that.
Ms. Iaquinto seconds, discussion. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the roll. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It's unanimous. We'll move on to the administrative notes, pleasure of the Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the six listed administrative notes as a group.
Mr. Canty makes the motion, is there a second?
I will sec, oh, I will second that.
Ms. Iaquinto seconds, discussion. Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The administrative notes are approved. We'll move on to public comment. This is general public comment. There will be time, and I'm sure a lot of folks in the audience here are here for the e-bike regulation discussion, but I'm going to open it up first for general public comment. Mr. Serke, the microphone is yours.
Rich Serke precinct two. At your November 18 meeting, I requested that during the old business section of that meeting, a motion be made to appoint me as special town council for the purpose of representing the town on a pro bono basis, for the limited purpose of filing a Superior Court complaint against the owners of Burt's, to enforce the Inspeccional Services Department Director's demolition order, which had been issued three months previously. The following day, I sent a draft complaint to Mr. Brindisi, writing as follows, quote, "Please share it with the members of the Select Board and with town council, as you see fit. It's my hope that you would comment upon this matter during your town manager's report at the November 25 meeting." Mr. Brindisi replied by saying he would indeed comment upon this matter during his report tonight, which I'm grateful for. I'm hoping that a motion will be made at that time, whether or not to accept my offer. Both Mr. Canty and Mr. Golden have advised me, however, that such a motion will not be accepted, because, they say, doing so would violate the open meeting law, since this matter was not listed as a separate agenda item tonight. I can only say to you that after my public comment at last week's meeting, and my many public comments at previous meetings, any such claim, at this point, is totally without merit. I don't think a donor has ever done more to persuade a donee to accept his gift. I've done my citizen's duty. I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Serke. Other comments? General comments? All right. Is there anyone online? Jade? Excellent. All right, we'll move on, then. We'll move to the electric bicycle legislation. Deb, I think you wanted to speak first?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all so much for coming here. This is great, this is exceeding my wildest expectations about what we would get at this public hearing. And I know some of you are here for other matters, but please feel free to comment on the e-bike legislation as well, while you're waiting for your, your business to come up. So, we're here to listen and to learn from all of you. We've already received dozens of written comments, and we'll be reading every single one of them, or at least I will, I promise. I am a great believer in getting input from people who are impacted by the changes that we, that we propose, and in the case of e-bikes, that includes just about anyone who lives in Plymouth, who walks the streets of Plymouth, who drives our roads, and who rides our bikes, whether it be traditional bikes or e-bikes. Every voice matters, so I hope that we hear a representative viewpoint from, from all of you. So, e-bikes are wildly popular. In fact, in Massachusetts, they're actually outselling regular bikes two to one, which is mind-blowing. And as a cyclist myself, I love that, because it means that more people can enjoy riding, even if they need a little help. It means that there are fewer cars on the road, lower emissions, all good stuff. But with that growth, comes safety concerns. Shortly after I was elected, I got a call from a grandmother, whose grandson had been in a very serious e-bike accident, and she was asking, she wanted to know what the town could do. And around the same time, I started getting calls and emails from other residents, who were worried about these fast-moving e-bikes on the rail trail, and the sidewalks, and kids zipping around on motorized bikes, who just didn't seem to know the rules of the road. So, to give you a sense of scale, between January 20, 2024, and September of 2025, Plymouth Police actually got more calls about e-bikes than they did about motorcycles. So, that really caught our attention. We said, we gotta, we gotta take a closer look at this, and see what's going on, if there is anything that we can do to improve safety. So, we looked first at state law, and we've learned a couple of things. E, e-dirt bikes are regulated by state law, they are not allowed on public roads, period, dead stop. Class 3 e-bikes are the ones that can go up to 28 miles an hour. They can be modified as well, to go even faster than that. They already require a license or a permit, and people must follow the rules of the road. Not that they do, but that's according to state law. But the Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes, the ones that can go up to about 20 miles an hour, really are not regulated at all. And that's where the gap is, and that's what we're trying to address here with, with our proposed regulations. So, right now, without any regulations, we, we do have kids under 16, riding motorized bikes, who don't know the rules of the road. We do have riders that are zipping down our one-mile rail trail. That, that, that rail trail in North Plymouth is only one mile long, you can't really use it for much more than strolling or, or riding casually, but we see people zipping down that rail trail, as if they have the right-of-way over the families and the seniors who walk there, and also enjoy that space. We have e-bike riders cutting off cars, riding on sidewalks, and we have to remember that we're all sharing these spaces, and when you introduce a new mode of travel, like a bike with a motor, it changes the rules for all of us, and we really need to, we need to look at that. And if we don't define expectations together, we end up with confusion, frustration, and serious injuries. So, I could stand here and give you countless statistics about e-bike tragedies across the country, we just saw what happened in Stonem, even though that was a dirt bike, that was a tragedy that could have been avoided. I could relay the warnings of the American Academy of Pediatrics, that suggests that no one under the age of 16 should be on a motorized bike, and the concerns of our own police chief has about e-bikes. But you've heard all of that, so I'm not here to, to, to rehash that. In a minute, our council, Kate McKay, will walk through what we're proposing. The bottom line of what we're trying to accomplish here, is that we want riders to understand the rules of the road, that means they need to be old enough to understand the rules of the road. We want reasonable speed expectations, we want guidance on passing and yielding, and we want some limits on where e-bikes can go, especially on sensitive trails. And we want some consequences for riding irresponsibly. All of this is up for discussion. All we're trying to do here is be proactive, and to set reasonable guidelines, that will actually encourage responsible ridership of e-bikes. Because as I said in the beginning, these bikes are not going away, they're becoming more and more popular, I applaud their popularity, but we also want to make sure that we are encouraging responsible ridership, and discouraging irresponsible ridership. So, thank you again for being here, and for helping us sort all of this out.
Thank you, Ms. Iaquinto. We're going to be joined by Town Council Kate McKay, who's going to give us a brief update as well.
Good evening. There's a slide up, that you all can see, it's kind of an outline of the legislation that's currently proposed. I think you'll recall, I've been in front of you, I think this might be the fourth time. There've been several revisions to the proposed legislation, but just by way of an outline, the current legislation provides definitions of the different classes of electric bicycles. There was a Class 3 added. It provides, in a broader sense, proposed rules to operate an electric bicycle in Plymouth, and that's kind of a summary underneath of what those rules propose. It does provide for penalties and enforcement, and it includes some miscellaneous provisions at the end. It exempts law enforcement, or, or somebody in the, in the pursuit of law enforcement, from the electric bicycle rules, and if memory serves me correctly, there's a severability provision, as well as some language to address negligent and reckless operation of a, of an electric bicycle. So, I'm happy to provide that.
So, just, if I could just jump in, just for two minutes, just to let the folks that are here this evening, and those that are watching at home, the process. So, as Attorney McKay pointed out, this is the synopsis of the proposed legisla, legislation, as it stands today. This is special legislation, that ultimately will have to go to town meeting for, for approval, and then we will send that to the state legislature for final adoption. But as Select Board Member Iaquinto pointed out, this conversation started to take place in May, when the Board asked the administration to take a look at this, working with the Commission of Health and Human Services, the police chief, we looked at data and determined that this is truly a problem locally, across the Commonwealth, and even nationally. So, we spent the summer looking at other possibilities for legislation, and that was brought forward to the Select Board on October 14th, for its first presentation. We took the feedback from the Select Board at that moment, and then we came back on October 28th for a second presentation. Since that time, we've had a written comment period that's been open, and we have received dozens of written comments regarding this proposed legislation. So, tonight is the opportunity for those folks that are in attendance, to provide verbal testimony to the proposed legislation. Ultimately, what will happen is, we'll try to summarize all the written and verbal comments. We'll bring that back to the Board on December 16th, so that they can understand what was said, and make any final modifications to the proposed legislation. This has to be complete by December 17th, which is when the warrant will close. And again, like I said, that would then go to Finance Committee for review, and then ultimately to Town Meeting at the April Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Are there any questions for either Town Council or Town Manager, before we get into public comment? Very good. Well, hearing and seeing none, I'll now turn things over to the public for comment. Jade's going to pull up a timer for us. Each person who wishes to speak will have three minutes to do so. It'll be displayed up on the wall, so that you can see how much time you have left. We do ask that, because of the number of folks who are here, that you confine your statements to three minutes. So, with that, is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Come on up, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, Deb, reply? I apologize if I'm a little tough to understand, I have a nodule on my vocal cord. So, my name is Seth Lawrence, I'm the owner of Serious Cycles, I've owned a bicycle store here for 30 years, and I just want to kind of discuss some of the stuff that is in the regulations, and kind of just a little overview of maybe the bikes and operation, different things. I was trying to figure out how to prepare for speaking tonight, and I was watching the news, and I had happened to see the child that happened to have been killed in Stonem recently, just absolutely awful. And as I was watching the report on it, the news anchor was actually sitting on a e-bicycle in a bike store, and explaining, you know, he was on an e-bike, he was killed, and, you know, they're talking about regulations with the state, and so on and so forth. And what kind of caught me off, and it was something that I've been thinking about, and I think a lot of people in here tonight have been thinking about, is the fact that I feel e-bicycles, e-bikes are being mixed together with e-dirt bikes. And I understand, obviously, there are different laws for each, an e-bicycle is under the regulations of a regular bicycle at this time. An e-dirt bike is an off-road bicycle. And, you know, when I was watching that, they kept saying, e-bike, e-bike, and I'm like, it was an e-dirt bike. And I think, just to give a little explanation of the differences between an e-dirt bike and an e-bicycle, is, a e-bicycle is about 40 pounds to 50 pounds, an e-dirt bike is about 200-plus. Speeds of a Class 1, Class 2 e-bike is generally, is going to be 20 miles per hour under, as where the speed of a e-dirt bike is 60 miles per hour. And I just want people to know, for all the complaints the town has had, I think they just got balled together as a e-bike, when a lot of those complaints- just got balled together as a e-bike, when a lot of those complaints, the kids riding downtown, weaving back and forth, I've seen it myself, those were e-dirt bikes, every single one that I saw. Now, to move on past that, um, I don't feel that registering a bicycle is gonna serve any purpose to law enforcement. One, I feel it's gonna cost the town more, because now they're gonna have to, uh, you know, start a database, keep track of everything, and that's gonna cost the taxpayers money. And I don't feel the enforcement that they're gonna be able to supply, because someone has a registered bike with a sticker on it, is gonna change anything. Majority of my customers that buy e-bikes are fifty-plus years old. I would say ninety-five percent. If I could just take another couple seconds. So I do feel there does need, it needs to be some regulation, so I do agree with it. I just feel the people that wanna use bike paths recreationally here in town shouldn't be, be held accountable to the very few e-dirt bikes that have been weaving around town and all around. So I don't feel that's fair, and there are a lot of people that use them, that need them, that need to, um, use it for mobility to get around. They need that extra, you know, assistance, and I feel like you're taking that away, taking them off the paths, or even off-road paths, it sounds like, and I just don't feel that that's fair. I do agree helmets save lives. I'm all about that. Also, the fact, um, that the, the, the way that it has to be put together has to protect people's lives. I understand that. But it doesn't need to be a burden on the regular bike riders that follow the rules and understand the rules. So, um, you know, those are the biggest things. I'm okay if you wanna find somebody for reckless driving and have the police enforce that, absolutely. I'm all about that.
You exceeded your three minutes and then some?
Yes.
I would like to give other folks the chance to speak, if you could wrap it up in five seconds.
Yes, no problem. So, um, I just, you know, a lot of input from people here, I think, will be good advice. And, um, you know, if there's anything I could do to be of assistance, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other folks? Come on up. You here in the front?
Hi, I look at this crowd and see a lot-
Could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Uh, I'm Lee Corwin. I'm a retired physician. I look at this crowd, and a lot of folks here are over fifty years old. I ride my e-bikes with my grandkids. It provides exercise for me that I can enjoy. I hope town government would like to keep our oldsters healthy and fit, and without the e-bike, I would not have that opportunity. So the e-bike is a major opportunity for me to bond with my grandchildren and a major opportunity for me to be healthy and be outside. The e-bikes that we're discussing, you've discussed the various classes, go no faster than a non-motorized bicycle. Will produce no greater injury than a non-motorized bicycle would produce if involved in an accident. As stated by the other gentleman, the ridership tends to be a lot more responsive, responsible than the individuals who are driving around in sirens. I kind of think that as you move forward, it's very important to not throw out the baby with the bathwater. Yes, the bathwater is dirty and needs to be controlled and cleaned, but the baby is a very, very viable opportunity for us to make use of this wonderful technology.
Thank you.
Or can I have the extra minute? Good evening, Select Board. My name is Lori Downs. I live at twenty-two Winterberry Way in Plymouth. E-bike accidents are on the rise due to their increasing popularity and higher speeds, but it is the higher-speed class-three e-bikes and the bikes that have been illegally modified to speeds as fast as forty miles an hour that are most frequently involved in accidents, especially among our youth. Folks in the community are screaming for higher-speed bikes to be regulated, but they already are, as Deb told us, by Massachusetts state law. The problem is that either folks don't know these laws, or they choose to ignore them. It's a big problem which absolutely needs to be dealt with. I was excited for this bylaw, because I anticipated that it would be a solution, that it would contain solutions to the problems associated with the high-speed e-bikes. But to my surprise, this bylaw is not about high-speed class-three e-bikes. Instead, it seeks to regulate the slower pedal-assist class-one and two bikes. Of particular concern, this bylaw seeks to ban these bikes from Plymouth Bike Trails. These are the type of bikes that offer assistance to folks with mobility issues, or who just need a little boost to get up hills, or a boost to their endurance to keep up with their family and their friends on bike rides. These are not the folks that are tearing through the streets and flying down the bike paths and flying through the crosswalks, I mean, the sidewalks. I have a personal stake in this, because a pedal-assist class-one electric bicycle has enabled my daughter, who has muscular dystrophy, to participate in family bike rides. Before this, she could not come on family bike rides with us. Bike paths are the only option for my daughter, because her trike is too wide for street riding, and there are other reasons that she can't ride along the street. I don't have time to get into it. These bikes benefit seniors. I've personally observed the joy on the faces of seniors in my community who have mobility issues, as they happily can pedal about the community once again. Banning these low-speed bikes from Plymouth bike paths is not gonna make this community safe from the folks who are recklessly tearing through the community on their high-speed bikes, nor is making it difficult for these riders of class-one and two bikes by applying licensing and registration requirements. I implore you to withdraw this proposed bylaw, and instead, on a local level, focus on education and enforcement of the existing laws. I have some thoughts on how to rein in this chaos, but I feel that these would need to come from a state or even a federal level. So I think it would be most effective if we could spend our energy working with our state representatives and senators for real solutions. Do I have a two seconds?
Go ahead. Finish that.
Okay. I just, just quickly, um, I already wrote a letter to all of you on this, but just so the rest of you know, as an aside, it is, from my research, it is my understanding that under current state law, the town actually cannot lawfully require licensing and registration of class-one and e-bikes under current state Massachusetts law, because the state of Massachusetts treats these as regular bikes, not motorized. The class-three, they treat as motorized, and they can, and they do require licensing and registration on those. Thus, my concern about that particular aspect of this proposed bylaw is probably irrelevant, but I know that prior to two thousand and eight, Mass General Law allowed municipalities the option to require registration of regular bicycles, and certainly, a bill could be filed as an attempt to reinstate this option. So should this become relevant, my opinion stands that class-one and class-two e-bikes should be left alone in terms of further legislation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Downs.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Harrison Quinn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, Chair of the Plymouth Center Steering Committee, and Governor-appointed member of the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority. I'm also an eighth-grade civics teacher at my alma mater, PCIS. I'm here tonight to talk about the e-bike proposal, which seems like a lot of people are, and that's fantastic. I, I'm learning a lot just by hearing a few people speak, so thank you. As a resident who lives on the rail path, I've seen my fair share of e-bikes. I think there is actually a lot of good in this proposal, and I'm in favor of consequences for stupid behavior on e-bikes. I also feel that e-bike registration could be a net positive, both for the town and the bike, uh, e-bike owner, even though I'm hearing some rebuttals, but that's fine. However, I do need to stress to the Select Board that banning e-bikes for riders under the age of sixteen and a half is not a step in the right direction. In fact, to me, it seems to be blatant age discrimination against the group that conveniently can't vote. I'm sure everyone has some story about teens making poor decisions on e-bikes. Of course, no one here will speak to the vast majority of teens on e-bikes who are doing nothing more than just riding their bikes. I'm also sure that very few will speak to the moments in which adults have acted very poorly on e-bikes. Again, this is why I'm in favor of consequences for poor behavior, not just banning people of a certain age. But why take it out on, uh, why only take it out on teens when they act poorly? They deserve to share the road as much as everyone else. Sadly, it seems to me that those who complain the most about teens on e-bikes are the same people who complain that teens spend too much time on their phones. Do you want them outside or on their phones? This is a way to get them outside. I urge the Select Board to amend the proposal to remove or lower the sixteen-and-a-half age restriction. There are other options that we could consider. We can ask teens to partake in a bike safety court, which I know Plymouth Police has done before in the past. We can ask parents to sign off on teen e-bike registration, and we can be explicitly clear what happens for poor consequences on the e-bike. It just seems odd to me that my thirteen- and fourteen-year-old students can take the MCAS, earn a spot in our high school's tech programs, apply for jobs in our, in our town, but they're not mature enough to ride a bike. This proposal is at sixteen and a half, which means a sixteen-year-old is legally allowed to get their permit and drive a car, but not mature enough to ride a bike. I think we could do better. So outright banning a large group of e-bike riders, to me, is just not good policy. It's just people complaining about teens. Again, I think we, as a town, are better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Hi, I'm Steve Mattern from Lincoln Street, and I am that e-bike rider. I didn't used to be. I used to be able to hop on my bike and ride fifty miles down to the Cape in a day, but just this year, I finally bought an e-bike, and I've been riding on the Grace Trail for quite a few years, and it's amazing to just see how popular that trail is. So I just have a couple of comments, not necessarily much advice, but something to think about. The first one would be, paint a line down the center of the Grace Trail, because if you're walking, you really should be on the right, right? And then a bike can safely pass you on the left, as long as there's no one coming the other way. The other thing is, widen the trail, because it's really fairly narrow for the number of people using it. And my third comment is that the trail has become tremendously popular over the last several years, and now, whenever you're out there, any time of the day, there's lots and lots of people on it. And then you get to Hedge Road, and it ends. And then there's a railroad track that everybody says the trains will come back on someday. Why don't you just extend the bike trail up into Cordage? Extend it all the way up to Gray's Beach in Kingston. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other folks?
My name is Tim Costello, and I don't really have a lot I can add to what's already been said, other than perhaps talk a little bit about myself and, and my bike riding. I do wanna make sure that I, I don't understand why we talk about just e-bikes. From my own personal riding, and I ride a lot along the waterfront and the trail, um, the only problem that I really see, there, there's lots of reckless behavior, um, but the worst of it is younger people, and I don't mean to pick on them, pick on them, but gangs of them riding and doing wheelies down the trail. Well, that's, that's not the way you should be riding a bike. I don't think we all should be punished, because some happen to be inconsiderate towards others. So I think that that's, and then I, and those typically, from my viewing, are not e-bikes. Those are just regular, small bikes. I, I don't know of anybody doing e, uh, wheelies on, with e-bikes. So, you know, my, personally, I'm moving on to sixty-nine years old. I rode a bike all my life. I could no longer get my leg over the bar, and going up Newfield Street, which is a quite a hill and curvy, got to be a problem for me. So a couple of years back, I got an e-bike as well, and a lot of us older folks are getting them. And we know how to ride responsibly, and I think that banning us from trails, I ride the waterfront all the time and that trail, and it's my form of walking, so that I don't have to drive down into town park and take a bike, or take a walk. I take my bike down and accomplish the same thing. So yes, it's exercise, as people have said, and I, I really would hope that, um, you know, you don't do something that takes away something that's enjoyable for a lot of people. I am all for, uh, curbing reckless behavior. There should be penalties for people who are acting recklessly, but let's do it that way. We don't take certain cars off the road because they can go a hundred miles an hour. We don't ban them and say, "You can't drive on the road." We have a speed limit. We tell somebody who's speeding, "You're gonna get a speeding ticket." So I think it needs to be dealt with in that way, and not this, I think this is overkill in what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Good eve- good evening. My name's Leighton Price. My wife and I, who's, she's a Town Meeting Member, Dorothy, submitted a letter to the Selectmen. Uh, I've got copies of the letter that anybody would, if they're interested, can see. But anyway, um, I've been cycling for more than eighty years, and in my retirement, I, for about ten years, I was organizing weekly bike rides in, in this area, Duxbury, Kingston, Pembroke, uh, down on the Cape, and so forth. Uh, and monthly, we would organize a regional ride, might go over to Rhode Island, ride the, uh, East Providence to Bristol Bike Trail. And annually, we would organize a number of bike rides to various foreign sites and ride in Europe. So in recent years, another one of a bike group, member of our bike group, Janice Owens, who's over here, had, took over doing the, the scheduling of rides, area, regional and I'd like to read you a few sentences from the letter that I wrote, because I think the, the legislation as it stands is really quite premature and should not be advanced to the Town Meeting at this point. It really needs to be refined considerably. The current draft of e-bike regula- regulations would seriously and negatively impact Plymouth residents, as well as non-residents from Massachusetts and other places who choose to extend the enjoyment of cycling into their older years by purchasing suitable electric-assist bicycles. In Europe, the requirements for e-bikes are very sensible: two-hundred-and-fifty-watt motors, no throttle, twenty miles an hour maximum. And many thousands of people safely ride regular bicycles and electric-assist bicycles on thousands of miles of bike paths. The European e-bike requirements are essentially class-one e-bike specifications listed in the, in the proposal that was presented. Legislation should restrict e-bikes with throttles, I think. That, those can be, that can be a risk, and they certainly should assist, should restrict, uh, e-bikes that have much more powerful motors, class-three, there probably should even be a class-four. Being able to use e-bikes and e, e-bike paths, uh, and bike paths can extend a person's cycling years and their enjoyment of nature, because riding on these paths is far safer- years and their enjoyment of nature, because riding on these paths is far safer than forcing us to ride on the roads, which would be the outcome of this current legislation. We wouldn't be able to ride the bike path from Nelson Park to, to Courtege. We'd have to ride the road down, to get there, have to ride Main and Court. It's much, a lot safer to ride the, the bike path from Main to, to Courtege.
Mr. Price, you've exceeded your three minutes. I'd need just a couple of seconds more.
No, just one more, couple more seconds. As currently writ, as currently written, I think the proposed legislation would be a tragedy for many senior citizen cyclists. That's all I have in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Yep, thank you. If anybody would like to have a copy of the letter I wrote, it's available. I'll put it on the table back here.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lisa Blount. I live in Plymouth. I have a couple parts of this to talk about. One is personally for me. I've always been a really active person. I now have some pretty serious health issues with my heart and lungs especially, and I can pretty much only ride my e-bike. Like, that's the only form of exercise I can do, and it's enjoyable for me. I don't want to ride on the roads. They're scary. I've almost been hit. I've seen things happen. We live near the forest, and I go in the forest a lot on the bike paths, on and off-road. I barely ever see anyone. I'm a responsible rider, just like everybody else is saying, you know, follow the rules, let people know I'm there, slow down. I think it's really unfair to kind of take away a lot of these things from people who are so responsible when it's such a small group. And it also seems to be the problem isn't really with Class 1 or Class 2 bikes. It seems like everything's kind of squished together, even though the legislation is separate for the e-dirt bikes and these other classes. It seems like, you know, I wonder with the information you shared about the data from the police for that year-time period, is that separated by class, or is it all just together where people are complaining about e-bikes? And does that include the, you know, the e-dirt bikes along with Class 1? Because I wonder how many of those complaints are really about Class 1 bikes. I'd imagine it's really low. I think the other big problem has to do, you know, I've been downtown and seen those kids, you know, there are really good kids who are very responsible. There's always just some group of any age in any kind of area you're looking at where there's a problem. And it seems like the problem has to do with a small group of people who don't want to follow the rules, and there doesn't seem to be circumstances for them. And now this is kind of taking punishment for everybody else from this small group. And perhaps the people who, you know, the kids, maybe they need more education. You know, the younger ones don't really understand the ru, the rule, the rules of the road and, you know, following the traffic rules, because they don't drive, some of them. And I think, you know, educating kids is kind of like a really big factor in this that needs to kind of be focused on, instead of penalizing, you know, responsible adults who are getting their exercise in a nice peaceful way. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Please come up, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Grace Pantano, and I live along the Seaside Trail. And we, my husband and I walk the trail frequently. It can sometimes be quite dangerous, because when you're walking along, when people pass you on an e-bike or on a regular bike, they don't indicate to you that they're passing you. You can't hear them. So if one were to just sidestep, you know, you could be hit and ser, seriously injured. There are people who, who ride their bikes with, you know, as they should, and I have, I have no objection to that. They ought to be able to do that. But the people who drive, ride their bikes and ride very fast, and I, I'm sure they are within the 1 and 2, but they're not, they're not being responsible when they're passing my people. I, I agree with putting a yellow line down the bike path. I think that would help at least define an area. And I also believe in manners, and just saying, "Passing on your left," or "Hit a, hit a bell," or something to alert people that are passing. We've been living on the bike path for twenty years, and we greatly enjoy seeing the number of people who have, are using it, but it's got to be used responsibly. And I applaud your efforts to regulate all of the e-bikes, and I hope something will be done and something will come out of it. The thing that I have some concern about is, what do I do if I'm walking along and I see somebody inappropriately doing something? What can I do about it? I have no way of identifying who they are. They go by so fast, I can't take a picture, and what would that do anyway? So that's a piece of it that I, that needs to be addressed. What do we do about being able to identify people? And you're, you're putting in fines, but how are you gonna find them if they're on the bike path? They're in the middle. And I know that the police force is overwhelmed, and we don't see them on the bike path anymore, monitoring it. They used to ride their bikes down, but they don't do that anymore. So that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Come on up. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Can you hear me? Okay, Greg Iaquinto, Warren Avenue, and I'm an e-biker. So this isn't the first time I'm on the opposite sides of the aisle in my house, but it's not gonna be the last either. But I wanted to give my insights to riding the bike and why it's good for me, and what I think the regulation is trying to do, and what I think other towns are trying to do. Because in the last meeting, Mr. Cohen had basically asked, he'd like to understand what the other towns are doing and where they're having success, right? I don't think that this regulation is actually doing that. I think it's doing the opposite of that. And what I mean by that is that this proposal would be the first, to my knowledge, in Massachusetts, that will require sixteen-and-a-half-year-old kids, "You can't drive here." It would also be the first in Massachusetts to re, regulate and register e-bikes, right? So what are the other towns doing? So let's talk about the e-bike market. The e-bike market right now in 2024 is $2.6 billion, and projected to be $11.4 billion in 2034. Thirty percent of the cycling market, the overall cycling market, are e-bikes. One-third of those are people over fifty, right? The good actors in this story, that comply to the rules and try to do the right thing. Seventy percent of sales are direct online purchases, which means a parent can click the order, it show up tomorrow, and the kids are on the street with zero training, right? So the towns of Andover, Auburn, Boston, Boylston, Milford, Millbury, Holden, Paxton, Westboro, Worcester, and so on, all know that they can't stop the growth and are embracing training and certification first, and embracing organizations like Mass Bike. They view that this is an opportunity to provide road safety and certification and defense training, and this should be the precursor for use who are studying for their learner's permit. It's all about providing better drivers down the road, right? They're providing experience. So Hanover has a zero-tolerance policy for all cyclists and e-bikers. You don't wear your helmet, the bike's gone, right? If you ride on a sidewalk, the bike's gone. We need to have a zero-tolerance policy for this, and it needs to, it needs to start now, because everything is being grouped together. Per the Hanover Police Chief, and I quote, "These children simply have no level of awareness regarding the dangers they face on the roadways. This is the root cause." We should be embracing training, certification, and registration for these young cyclists. You can register them then, you can give them a certificate. The certificate could be a QR code on their bike, everyone knows who they are, and now you're just weeding out, you know, the bad actors in this movie. Lastly, I use it because of mobility. I also have a road bike, and I can go places further. It carries my cargo, it allows me to do things that I couldn't do. You know, I have good days, and then I have full-on motion days where I need my e-bike, right? And so what I like to do is I like to ride, ride a road and the beach, right? Because we have a pristine avenue that brings us to someplace that's really, really special, right? And in that really, really special place is something that's good. So I leave my, my truck at home, no gas, I have an eco-friendly environment, I'm not using electricity to charge it, my legs are charging the bike, has no radio, I'm not disturbing anyone, I'm not riding in the dunes, I don't ride in the soft sand, because the soft sand, you know what, has salt in it and corrodes my gears.
Mr. Iaquinto, you've exceeded your three minutes. Could you wrap it up in ten seconds or less?
Thank you. So if anybody agrees with me that we should have a certification process instead of a regulation process, please contact your town manager, and I thank you for coming.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Phil Letty. I live at Fourteen River Birch Way up in Redbrook, and I have a confession to make. My wife knows this, but I own five e-bikes. She said, "Why do we need another one in the basement?" But I use them, so I don't complain. I moved down here to, to Redbrook ten years ago, and I've always been a road cyclist. But as soon as I moved down here to Plymouth, I realized I'm not gonna be riding on the roads in Plymouth. There are no shoulders. It's too dangerous to ride on the public roads in Plymouth. So that's why I'm out riding around the bogs on Redbrook, or on the trails over Half, Halfway Pond. Violence Trust invites us to use their trails. So there's a lot of people in Redbrook that have bought e-bikes and use them religiously up that way. And you know, you talk about the modifications to the electric bikes. Those are the bikes that are being bought online. They're not being sold by E508 or Sirius Cycle, because they're responsible bike shop owners. But these, you know, I've been down, my wife, she volunteers on the Mayflower Friday afternoons. So I've been down to meet her for dinner, and I walk on Was, Water Street, and I see these children, and they're riding, they're called Super 73s. It's a glorified motorcycle. It's not a bicycle. But they're doing wheelies down there, you know, they're going down the road at thirty miles an hour. It's dangerous. But the problem you have when you talk about crafting bylaws, how it can be enforced? How are you gonna say that, you know, this particular person riding a bike, he's going too fast for the police, how to enforce it? That's a major issue, I think, with e-bikes, is the police all around the state, there is no way to enforce it. You go down to Falmouth, to the Shiny Sea Bike Path, there are people flying by on that, there's no enforcement whatsoever. So that's an issue that we're gonna have to deal with. So as far as crafting any bylaws, we gotta think seriously about what we're gonna put the language into it, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else in the room like to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Edital Zachman, I'm an architect retired. I live in the Plain Hills and listen carefully what everybody says here, and I'm surprised that I did not hear the words roundabout, okay? What everybody's talking here is not the specific problem with electric vehicles, but it's a typical problem of a conflict between pedestrians and motorized vehicles. And the only thing that I can see as a solution to this problem is to install the roundabouts, which are, for example, installed in Aubrey Street, and of course, everywhere in Europe. And I studied the roundabouts, I saw how the people are forced to lower the speed to twenty miles per hour in general. And that's how to avoid the conflicts between the pedestrians and motorized vehicles, okay? We don't need the special legislation for electric vehicles. There is nothing wrong with electric vehicles. It's the vehicles and pedestrians conflict, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zachman. Would anyone else in the room like to be heard? Is there anyone online? Last chance, anyone else like to be heard on this matter? All right, well, thank you for your participation here tonight. We appreciate the feedback. We will take this into consideration as we craft the final language of the, the proposed legislation. I'm gonna call a five-minute recess so that folks can exit the room. We'll be back at approximately 7:08. All right, folks, we'll bring it back to our open session. The next item on our agenda is appointments for the Earth Removal Bylaw Committee. Our first applicant tonight is Samuel Chapin. Mr. Chapin couldn't join us tonight. He did send a letter to the board expressing his sorrow for not being here. So we'll move on to Mr. Edward Conroy. Mr. Conroy, if you want to come up to the podium, introduce yourself, say why you'd like to join this committee, and then I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Hello, all. My name is Ed Conroy and Plymouth resident. I've been on the zoning board since 2009. Before that, I moved from New York City in 2001, right around September 1, and I joined the Finance Committee. I was on the Finance Committee from 2002 to 2009 when I joined the zoning board. I also ran for town meeting at that time. So I've been on the zoning board ever since, so I have seen a lot of earth and gravel removal permits, seen a lot of things that have gone on. So the sand and gravel bylaw was, the current one, was established in 2018. There was a gravel removal committee that was on, and the zoning board, the five members, had asked me to go to see what's going on with that committee. So I sat in on a couple of meetings. And then what happened is I decided to do an amendment to the bylaw. And basically, and how the bylaw works is first you have a portion that's allowed by right. So if you're going to take sand and gravel off the site, it's allowed by right. Then the next level is the zoning permit. The zoning permit would be given by the building inspector. And then the third level is through the special permit. So you can, so those are the three levels. So when I was looking at the bylaw back in 2018, I made an amendment to what was as-of-right. It related to, I thought, there were some problems going on with as-of-right. And a lot of, there's a lot of exemptions out there. One, the big one relates to cranberry operations. And so you look down at, when you go north on Route 3, what's going on with the, Pete Landis' wife has a cranberry bog going on there. And so she's, a lot of that sand and gravel is taken out and going to your husband's business. And if you look at what the plans were, enormous amount of sand was taken out of that. And I think before a applicant can get a special permit to do anything, and there's going to be sand and gravel removal, we have to look at, we should have a bylaw that provides that. They should give alternatives to all this sand and gravel. They should give us a couple. What else is out there? And that's what happens on the board, is we offer our thoughts on what are the alternatives that we can provide. And we're not the ones making millions of dollars off of sand and gravel. So I think that part of the bylaw is that the petitioner should give some options besides taking, is there any other options? But what I see is they're going to be like, no, there's no option here. I have to take all of the sand and gravel removal, and because that's what's happened. Currently, the town's involved in litigation, and we had David Peck, who's also on the Zoning Board of Appeals with me since a long time. He was after me, I think. And so he had, and this applicant, asked them to come up with some options. And he, we had designed maybe two or three options, and they were unwilling to take those options, and currently it continues in litigation with the town. So that's one thing I'd like to have done, is have some options. Other things that should be done in relation to this bylaw is currently they have a surety, there's a bond element. Wherever someone takes off sand and gravel, they have to put a bond up and say there's a, say it's a million-dollar bond with a, they can go to the bond company and they can just pay some money each year to cover the bond. I think when we're dealing with sand and gravel removal, we may want to ask for a cash bond. So say they're taking, say they're going to make $4 million off of the sand and gravel or $2 million, whatever it may be. Say after, and when they put up, because we want to make sure that whatever they're proposing, whether it be a business or an ice skating rink or whatever, that they follow through with what the end use is. How are we going to make sure that we follow the end use? Possibly, because obviously what we've done here is we had an issue with Black Cat Road where a person came up and said they were going to put cranberries in. So they took all the sand and gravel, they took tons of, millions of dollars of sand and gravel out. And then they're like, oh, actually, we're not going to do cranberries anymore. We've decided against it after we've, we've taken all the sand and gravel, we've made the millions of dollars, and we're going to change it to solar. And we're like, well, we were supposed to do the cranberry. And we had, we had no, we had no backbone, not backbone, we had no enforcement to say, you know, you said you were going to take out, you're going to do a cranberry farm. That's why we gave you the exemption. And if, and if the town was to fight them with the cranberry, we'd probably lose because the cranberry law is so lenient for, but there is a movement up there to change this. So how are we going to do the enforcement to stop this, I'm going to put up a cranberry bog and I'm going to take away the million dollars? I think the only way to do it is with a cash bond. So say as they sell these, sell all this sand and gravel, maybe they put up out of that $4 million, a million bucks or something, where we make them the cash out of their bank account. And so if someone, if we're, if the town or whoever's holding a million dollars of their money, that's a pretty good incentive to make them want to possibly build that cranberry bog or build whatever they were supposed to build. And so it happens a lot where that end use changes, and that goes to enforcement. Say what's happened with, in relation to enforcement. I've had issues with the building inspector back in, maybe 10 years ago or so, where I had, I'd gone to the site with other zoning board members, and you're only allowed to open up five acres at a time. And so, and we went into the site, and I'm in pretty good shape, I can run. And so this other gentleman on the zoning board, we ran up this hill and discovered that more than five acres were open. We had caught them. And we had brought this, I had brought this to the building inspector, and there was no enforcement. So that was the end of that. And so then, how am I going to get this done? So the enforcement officer wouldn't back me up. So what we did is, because we're on television, I brought it up on live PAC TV, and him and I got in a big to-do. So how's, we have to have enforcement of this. And I know, how much time do I have left?
I would suggest that you wrap up your remarks so that we could get on to our other.
All right. So to wrap this up, I'm a lawyer. I have a good institutional knowledge of real estate. Been on the zoning board since 2009. I think that we have to, the bylaw has some changes to be done, and I think it has to deal with enforcement. I also think the definition of ancillary has to be defined, ancillary use, that we have to maybe have some type of formula where we value the amount of money that they're making off the sand and gravel from, say, the rent if they're building an apartment building they're going to get. We have to tighten up ancillary and how that's defined in the bylaw. So I'd appreciate your support tonight, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy. Other questions from the board? Mr. Canty?
Two questions. Do you currently have an opinion about the town's existing earth removal bylaw?
Yes. It's not working. We're getting ripped off.
Okay. Do you currently have an opinion about the sand and gravel removal activity occurring in Plymouth?
Yes. There's too much of it. It's a disguise. They're using exemptions to make money off of the sand and gravel, and it's ruining our roads, and it's hurting our aquifer, and we have to protect our aquifer, and we have to enforce this. So my opinion is the current one needs to be improved.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Iquinto?
Yeah. Mr. Conroy, how would you define success when all of this is over? Once the committee has wrapped up its work with the consultant and we have whatever it is we're going to have? What does success look like?
Performance. So being able to drive north on Route 3 and not see humongous apes of land and just wide-open vaths. Say driving, that's, say driving south. We have that Spencer project on Collins. You know, it'd be nice to see that building. Would be success, not that huge open land when we drive south between, he said he was going to put a building up there and to do his business. It's been a long time. Is that success? Maybe. He did what he, the end use. So the proof of success will be in the pudding. So what they do, they say they're going to do something, the developer doesn't, living up to their word.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Iquinto? Other questions? Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Conroy, you outlined some of your reservations about the current bylaw as it pertains to the enforcement. You're suggesting the bond aspect. You're looking at the word incidental. Obviously, as an attorney serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals for as long as you have, you've had to sit on in these cases. Are there any aspects of it that, you know, the strengths of it? What are the strengths in just a quick review of it? Where you see the strengths? And obviously, you've indicated to Mr. Canty and Mrs. Iquinto the weaknesses, but I'm just curious about some of the other components of it.
So I like how they defined by right. I think that people that are building a home, a single-family, a two-family home, should be able to take that sand off-site. Shouldn't be hassled. There's the definitions within the bylaw by right. Also, I like the setbacks on that, but I think that it does need to be defined, taking out hills. And so I think that the setbacks are pretty good, and I think that a lot of thought and time went into that prior bylaw. And I think that a lot of it is good. And so, but I do think we, those three areas need to be tightened up.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Conroy. Next up, we have Scott McMillan.
Good evening. My name is Scott McMillan. I appreciate the opportunity to describe my qualifications to serve on this committee. I believe that my professional training and experience as a hydrogeologist and project manager, along with my commitment for volunteer community service, makes me a strong candidate for the role. One that's somewhat different than many of the other candidates because I bring the technical background and less of the, less of the policy. I'm deeply concerned about the town's difficulty in effectively regulating certain earth removal projects that are not necessary and incidental to the primary use of the property, that is sand mining. Sand mining has caused significant and permanent ecological damage in Plymouth, including the loss of the rare coastal pine barren habitat. Although the language of the current bylaw is generally protective, its implementation has certainly been inconsistent, especially for certain sites permitted under the guise of industrial development. And Mr. Conroy, you know, spoke about that at length. Most critically, the bylaw lacks meaningful enforcement mechanisms, which contribute to the, to the damage from certain sand mines, in particular 71 Hedges Pond Road. The committee is charged with addressing these environmental issues while still being supportive of economic development through the enhancement of the, of the existing law. A bit about my background. I am a retired hydrogeologist with 42 years of professional experience in environmental consulting on large private sector projects. My work has focused on hydrogeologic characterization and remediation of large complex sites, including many conducted under Massachusetts Solid Waste and 21E hazardous site cleanup programs. I have extensive experience evaluating subsurface geologic, geotechnical, and groundwater conditions. These are key criteria that were identified in the charge for, for members on the committee. I also held professional licenses in three states. Throughout my career, I have balanced private sector interests with legal, technical, and regulatory requirements. Experience that fosters objectivity and judgment that is essential for this committee. Since I've moved to Plymouth, I have immersed myself in learning about the town's natural resources and civic processes, and have become actively involved in multiple local volunteer organizations. I serve as a technical expert for the Sustainable Plymouth Water Committee and for Sustainable Red Brook, and also I'm a board member and a technical expert for a large lake association in the Adirondacks in New York. For the record, I am not a member of the Plymouth Stewardship Alliance. In closing, my technical and management background complements the largely policy-focused strengths of, that most of the other candidates have. I believe I'm the only, with the exception of Sam Chapin, who isn't here tonight, I think we are the only two people that have had a very technical, environmental career at a high level. I will be a collaborative team member with my extensive experience building consensus among diverse stakeholders, and I will bring a balanced, technically grounded perspective to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Canty?
Thank you. Mr. McMillan, I have two questions for you. Do you currently have an opinion about the town's existing earth removal bylaw?
Yes. That it, that many of the, many of the, many of the technical aspects are reasonably protective of the environment, but that it is, it is not, it certainly is not well-implemented, and that enforcement and monitoring are definitely lacking, and that there are certainly the financial penalties for not following the bylaw are certainly inadequate.
Okay. Thank you. And do you currently have an opinion about the sand and gravel removal activity occurring in Plymouth?
I do. I believe that it, that it's excessive, you mean, that it, that the, that the process favors those who are able to work the system through, you know, LLC shell games and, you know, segmentation to, you know, to kind of game the permitting process, and so that I think they, I think the sand mining business may, may be gaming the system to... be gaming the system to gain unfair advantage.
Thank you.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. I'll ask you the same question. What does success look like to you when all is said and done?
I suppose in, certainly, certainly a revised system that provides more environmental protection and doesn't, you know, where we're not, you know, it doesn't result in big holes in the ground like we have at Seventy-One Hedges Pond Road. I suppose success in some ways means that everybody is at least a little bit unhappy. Because it's, it's impact, you know, it's kind of impacting everyone fairly and unfairly. I certainly, you know, I'm on the environmental side of this, but I realize that we obviously have to strike a balance. But I think the balance is tilted too far to the sand mining industry at this point.
Mr. Cohen?
So again, a similar question from the, that I posed earlier about the current bylaw, and we're touching on some of its weaknesses and concerns. What do you see in its, one, have you read the bylaw?
I've read the bylaw. I will, I will say that I don't, I don't fully, you know, I don't know all the ins and outs of it. My focus has been on the technical issues.
Right.
So I can't speak a lot to, you know, some of the legal, the legal components.
Mentioning the excessive, have you seen any of the current permits that have been issued and their conditions and how they're issued? Have you?
I have not read the permits.
Okay. But your focus is, and again, your top priority in trying to improve it would be to focus on?
Certainly, I mean, environmental protection. And I see, you know, two issues. One is certainly groundwater protection, and that's where my expertise is, and that's what a lot of people talk about. But I think there's another one that isn't spoken about enough, and I think is possibly even a greater issue, and that's protective of, protection of the pine barren habitat.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Walter Morrison. Mr. Morrison?
Walter Morrison, Nine Bloody Pond Road. I currently serve as vice-chair in the Conservation Commission. I come at this from a different angle than everybody else that's applied tonight. I come out of the School of Agriculture. I will freely admit I am a tour guide currently for Benson's Pond Cranberry Bog in South Middleborough. Past trustee for Federal Furnace Cranberry in Carver, Mass. So my cranberry experience goes back decades. I'm familiar with the economics of the cranberry situation. I'm looking at it from a different point of view, possibly, of other applicants. I think I have shown the ability to try to gain consensus from my current work on the Conservation Commission, where we have tried to steer more middle path. And I would hope that I'd be able to bring some of that same attribute to this group, and my knowledge of what is necessary for the, hopefully, continuation within the making agriculture available. But I'm fully cognizant of the financial downfall right now that we are experiencing within the cranberry industry, and fully recognize there's going to be significantly less acreage of cranberries in the future. And a lot of that is, there's other reasons, but you don't need to hear that. Beyond that, I'd be interested in any questions. Just been listening to the others, you questioning other applicants earlier, and I'd like to respond.
Mr. Canty?
I'll give you that opportunity. Do you currently have an opinion about the town's existing earth removal bylaw?
Yes. It has not effectively worked. I'm also a past member of the Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association, so I'm trying to get everything out so that you know where I'm coming from. I recognize, and I testified at the last hearing, or shouldn't say hearing, the last interration of a group of gentlemen that was put together to work the last cranberry bylaw, and I testified in front of that group. I recognize that the cranberry industry, by some individuals, has been used as a fig leaf to cover and gain access to sand, and I fully recognize it. I'd like to be protective of the cranberry industry, but at the same time, I don't think it should be used as a cover to do something else. No question. Enforcement, I realize, just being a town resident, has been lacking. It's not to say that the people involved with enforcement are entirely at fault. I think there needed to be more mechanisms within it, and more frequent review of the situation as the sand was, you know, whatever the use was, was being developed, more closer monitoring was definitely needed for the situation. I hope that answers it.
I think it does.
I'm not, I'm not happy with the way we sit right now, that's for sure. And I do live near Hedges Pond Road, and that was a mistake on a number of different issues. I know in front of Conservation, they asked for wetlands replication, and the Conservation Commission did not demand that that replication be done first before the rest of the project was done. So again, we're stuck with the situation. That was a mistake. I feel as though that we probably, in that situation there, should have asked for an outside, non, you know, unbiased from another, wetlands review should have been done, and that wasn't. There were errors made in letting that situation happen. Setting aside all the falterol.
Okay.
With, you know, that we see in the newspaper, that people.
Okay.
Trying to judge how the town did its business for that.
You've already.
One last thing that I am in favor of in this, that we don't do in this town, and I believe that there should be a fee attached to the amount of yards being removed to help manage our roads that are broken down by this activity.
Okay. You have already touched upon it, but in case there's anything you'd like to add, I will ask you my second question. Do you currently have an opinion about the sand and gravel removal activity occurring in Plymouth?
Yes, I have. Definitely what's been going on is not right, and it hasn't been enforced. As we look on Route 3, beside Route 3 being the first obvious one up just north of here, the current bylaws call for it to be, if it vegetated, it just hasn't happened. That's wrong. More importantly, I'm disturbed by what I have observed in the south end of Plymouth. And I don't want to go exactly personal on this one. I have seen the situation where sand was removed under the auspices of putting in cranberry bog, and then a few years downstream, then the system is played again, where they take the regulations that are allowed by the state to put solar on the cranberry bog, and the cranberry bog is then set to the side. So in a sense, it migrated from a hill to sand removal to cranberry to solar. We can't have it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Morrison. I will ask you the same question about what success would look like to you when all is said and done.
Previous gentleman had a good point of view when he said everybody's going to be a little bit unhappy. Amongst all decisions that involve different points of view, that's probably the wisest thing I've heard in a long time. I recognize that cranberry growers need sand. I've also recognized from my work down at Benson's Pond Cranberry, that particular owner does not have sand resources for his operation. He has to buy sand in. That's something that has to be thought of as we're moving forward in this also. In other words, there are going to be cranberry growers that exist that do not have their own sand, and how are they to be kept in business? Or are they part of the bathwater that gets thrown out? I hope not.
Mr. Cohen?
So again, you come from a unique perspective. Obviously, you have worked in the industry, the agricultural industry, an important industry in terms of economic development, and, you know, it's something that we should be trying to do our best to promote in terms of the cost of services that it provides the town. Very little services derives a revenue for the town. But you're mentioning how this industry is under restraint right now and diminishing, you know, as the years move along. Knowing what the industry means to the town economically, knowing where the industry's going, looking at this bylaw, from your perspective, you mentioned a reference to a fig leaf in trying to make a determination between the real efforts to maintain an industry or the fig lick effect. I mean, you have the skill set to observe that. In the current bylaw, where do you think that it lacks in that element? In terms of the current bylaw, in reference to, you know, taking advantage of it for economic reasons, where do you think the bylaw falls short or is strong enough when it comes to this industry?
Do I have a solution to that? I'm going to say, I don't think I have a solution yet, as to how to stop it. I recognize that the state has, you know, in dealing with this, we're still going to have to think about what the state says. The state says that agriculture should not be impinged. They should be allowed to be able to grow a crop. The trick is, is how to allow a cranberry, or any farmer, is it possible that a farmer could come forward who doesn't have a cranberry bog, and he says, and not currently in the industry, he has enough land, he has the water resources, could he create a cranberry bog? And the answer is, I think we want to say yes, because at least on a statewide average, for every acre of cranberry bog, there's another three acres of upland. Well, if I have a twenty-five-acre operation, and that's the average size of Massachusetts, is twenty-five acres, and minus, you know, we have eighty make-pieces, two thousand, but then we have many smaller ones. The average farmer's twenty-five acres. So that means there's a hundred-acre parcel that is not in housing, not another. Demand needed, there isn't the demand for town services in that hundred acres. And in theory, there's seventy, you know, there's seventy-five of those acres that are left untouched. We need to have the ability to somehow let that happen when and if the market does come But yet, I don't want to take an advantage of. Maybe the idea of a bond is going to be, is going to be the key to it? I'm not sure. I'm not sure the finances as to how it's going to affect that industry, as to whether it's going to make it impossible to do. Because in general, most agriculture is not high-revenue producing for the investment that it's made in the land. And this is why you see so many farms today disappearing from the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is David Peck. He was not able to make it in person, but I know that he's traveling to be with Failing to the Holiday, and I think he's joining us online. Good evening, Mr. Peck. Nope. We're joining you to the meeting as we speak. I think they just made you the host, Jade. Good evening, Mr. Peck. If you wouldn't mind muting yourself and letting us know who you are and what your interest is in this committee.
I have put it in my application material, but I have been, I will, in full disclosure, been part of the Plymouth Stewardship Alliance, working on this for several months. Also, with my colleague Ed Conroy and others, have been on Zoning Board of Appeals for me as an alternate or a regular member for twenty years. In that role, I've had to interpret and work with the gravel bylaw, and as others, you have heard, it needs tightening up. One thing I would like to point, and just others in my background, as you may know, chairman of the Towns Building Committee. I was a member of two of the Charter Committee and Charter Commission. I believe in public service. So I'm hoping this is another opportunity for me to roll up my sleeves and be part of a collaborative group, working on improving this bylaw. One thing I would like to point out is, our current bylaw, 203-2, is not a sand-mining bylaw. Its title is Natural Features Conservation. And to me, the removal of sand is clearly an issue, but there's so many other things that I would hope our committee can learn best practices from other communities, both in Massachusetts and in the country, to continue to protect our natural environment. Our bylaw, in many ways, isn't bad. It gives trees and topography that is to be protected. It gives distances from property lines. It gives a count of trucks going to and from the site. However, with the other folks who are applying, enforcement continues to be an issue. Many things are self-reported. I heard a story from Lee Hartman that when there was concern about truck counts, he had to send a staff member for forty hours, sitting in her car, counting trucks. Something's wrong with that process to have to pull somebody off. We need better systems of enforcement. Again, you've heard good ideas from several of the people here. But I want to be a collaborator in getting a better bylaw to fall town meeting. We need the time to work on it, and so far, the appointments that have gone into place are all good people. Some of your applicants this evening are all good people. This will be a synergistic effort, where the sum will be greater than the total of the individual elements. We've got good people who are being assembled into this group, and I would like to be part of it. and serve the community on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Questions from the board? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Peck. So I'll ask you my standard two questions. First and foremost, do you currently have an opinion about the town's existing earth removal bylaw?
Yes, I do. Many kind of smaller ones, which will get better, but two principal ones. One, again, you've heard, the definition of incidental is subject to interpretation, and I think has been interpreted in a way that can damage the environment. That needs to be tightened up. The other thing that I would like to see is that virtually every gravel removal or site development require a special permit rather than a zoning permit only. As Rich Cirque has pointed out in his material, that you'll be getting to, right now, we have three levels of permitting. There's the as-of-right, I think Ed Conroy pointed this out. There are projects that require a zoning permit but not a special permit. And that's where I think that gray area has been misused. And our third level is requiring a special permit. And I happen to think a special permit is good because it requires a supermajority of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It requires four votes. And it also requires alternatives to be studied. Not just what the applicant says, this is the way I believe it needs to go. The, by modifying this and requiring the study of alternatives, the overall project will be made better and hopefully far more mitigation to the environment. So those are the two big things, as well as many other smaller ones to be tightened.
Okay. And do you currently have an opinion about the sand and gravel removal activity occurring in Plymouth?
I think the episodes that have sort of triggered this entire process, which are Collins Avenue and 71 Hedge, in the last few months or years, so I've not seen another 71 Hedge. So I think it's modified to a degree. I will note that I think our current building inspector is doing a much tighter job in reviewing things. If you'll recall, he required a building permit at some expense to the developer at 71 Hedge, which was a surprise to them, that he tightened things up to them. So I think, I think it's been less egregious over the last year or so. So that's my take on what's happening right now. We want to keep it modest, but required. Again, I believe in balance, and I believe in not penalizing developers, but kind of working with them in a way that minimizes the damage to the environment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peck.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Peck. And I will ask you my same question, and that is what will success look like to you when all is said and done?
Success will look like there is more existing topography and existing landscaping and ground cover. Soil, trees, bushes retained and left in place. As we know, sand by itself allows water to go through fairly directly, whether it's four feet or 20 feet. Pure sand is not protecting the aquifer and not protecting from damaging chemicals going through. What does is our topsoil and our trees and our bushes. So what I'm hoping is and expecting, the glass is half-full, not half-empty, but that we will get something that retains existing ground cover and trees and bushes and avoid the full clear-cutting, which happens from time to time.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Peck, you've pretty much outlined my concerns to the other applicants in terms of the strengths of the bylaw. But having, Ed and you have had an opportunity to sit on these boards that oversaw these special permits, these questions about sand and gravel removal, the permits that you're issuing. In that process, what's your greatest frustration in that process?
Well, I will say, you know, consistent with my earlier comments is, I think the town should demand study of alternatives from each developer. People may recall, I voted against both Collins and voted against 71 Hedge because as an architect and planner, which is my professional background, the project could have been achieved without significant gravel removal. You can have a driveway that slopes up. You don't need to knock the hill down to provide access to a project area. So a main thing is, I want to challenge developers to say, prove to us that the alternative, you all, study multiple alternatives, but prove to us that the select, your preferred alternative is the one that works best.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Quinto?
Mr. Peck, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you, Dick.
I heard previous applicants say that the, I may get to watch how I word this. It's not a fee, but for earth removal, gravel removal, so much a yard. And I heard a couple of them say putting it into fixing, repairing roads. But what's with the idea of getting a decent amount and putting it back into water conservation or into re-green in downtown or anywhere in town? We have all these, all these plans with no funding. What's your thought on that, David?
I, I welcome creative ideas. I will say that the quote "gift" unquote from a developer of 10 cents a yard has not changed in my 20 years on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mine also.
So, and frankly, the roads do get beat up. And devoting that gift to road repair, I think, among other things, the gift should be larger. There might be not calling it a gift, but, you know, thinking about creative ways for the developer, without penalizing them too greatly, but to get more contributions to the town for frankly, the damage they're doing to our environment. I don't want to stop developing, so to say, on those two projects that I voted against. I had viable alternatives where for far less gravel removal, they could have achieved the project. There's others in the past that I think are still in litigation, same thing. Ed Conroy mentioned one, that there was, there were creative alternatives. But I think your point is finding other ways to potentially direct some of the fees or whatever associated with development, you know, could be directed elsewhere and not just to the roads. I'd certainly welcome consideration of that.
Thank you very much. I just feel that we're going to charge a fee and we're going to, well, hopefully, the gift is larger. And it should also go for, if you're damaging the environment, it should also go back into repairing the environment. And I've been following your Sustainable Plymouth Group and learning these things and hearing these issues. So I think it's time we start addressing that also, as far as the fees go and, or whatever you want to call it. What did you call it?
Gift.
A gift.
Right now, it's a gift of 10 cents, hasn't changed in 20 years.
Yes. Well, I know that, that's right. You know, I was listening and I wanted to ask about that. And my last question is, how many boards or committees do you serve on now?
Right now, Building Committee, and I'm an alternate on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So those are the only two. I do a lot of other volunteer work in the town, but those are my two town hats right now.
No, no problem. I just wanted to ask. You know, I voted for you in the past on a lot of projects, and I have to say, committees, even the PGDC at one point.
Well, I am still there as well.
Oh, are you really? Yeah, all right, okay.
Okay, you got me.
And you always done, oh, that's all right. That isn't why I said it. But I was just thinking of the things I've supported you on in the past. So you've always done a good job and glad you do serve for the town and do your time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Mr. Peck, I know you're traveling with family, so thank you for being here virtually tonight, and good luck in the process.
Okay, and I'm going to go back to my pizza and a glass of wine, so.
Enjoy.
So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You as well. Our next applicant is Mr. Richard Cirque. Mr. Cirque?
I've only applied to this board because I rarely, if ever, appear before the Planning Board or the Committee of Precinct Chairs, and I appear probably too often before this board. I've lived in Plymouth since 1974, during which time I practiced real estate and zoning law in a Plymouth law firm until I retired and the firm amicably dissolved 45 years later in 2019. In the course of my practice, I represented many clients before the Zoning Board and the Planning Board. I was a member of the Zoning Board from 1979 through 1986, retiring as its chair. I'm a longtime Town Meeting member. I was a member of the committee which formulated the current bylaw, which was approved by Town Meeting in 2018. As has been stated, earth removal provisions were divided into three categories. Those not requiring a zoning permit from the Director of Inspection Services. Those requiring a zoning permit but not a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And those requiring both a zoning permit and a special permit. A key provision in the bylaw was defining earth removal that was quote-unquote "necessary and incidental to a principal use or a lawful structure or an approved subdivision road or a lawful utility installation." Earth removal that, operations that were not deemed to be quote-unquote "necessary and incidental" were regulated more tightly than those that were. The committee set forth criteria to define necessary and incidental. However, experience has shown over subsequent years that these criteria were not scientifically specific enough to prevent undesirable earth removal operations. What's needed now, in my opinion, is a professional consultant's advice to supply specific scientific criteria by which, to distinguish earth removal operations. The committee's job, as I see it, would be to sift from among those operations and formulate the degree of regulation that should be required for each. And listening here tonight, I think that Mr. Conroy's suggestion of a bond has a lot of merit. And the bond could be collected by extracting from the stream of income that the gravel operator is realizing, a certain percentage that could be set aside and placed in an escrow account rather than requiring the bond at the outset in the case of someone who doesn't have that amount of upfront cash. I think Mr. McMillan's comments are right on point in terms of needing scientific criteria to evaluate and compare proposals. I think the alternatives analysis that Mr. Conroy and Mr. Peck mentioned are right on point. There needs to be a comparison between what is being proposed and what's possible so that we can choose in favor of the one that's least harmful. And on the issue of requiring a donation from the cranberry, from the gravel remover, there's a reason why it's called a donation, because if it were insisted upon as a fee, it may run into legal problems. But that doesn't mean there aren't ways in which we can, we can collect more, and we certainly should try. And the wise applicant for a special permit, and the applicant is usually at that point represented by counsel, knows that part of the submission package should be a healthy donation for remediation caused by the operation. And as far as dedicating those monies to repair of roads and so forth, I'm all for that. But those are my comments. And in anticipation of Mr. Canty's questions, I'm not satisfied with the current bylaw, even though I was one of the authors of it. And as I said a moment ago, I think it needs more scientific criteria so that in addition to legal language, such as necessary and incidental, we have scientific criteria by which to further define those concepts. And, but I don't think the current bylaw is sufficient with the benefit of hindsight. And in anticipation of Ms. Ayquinto's questions, I, I think a favorable outcome would be a reworded and strengthened bylaw that had those scientific criteria, that had bond enforcement provisions, and that had the alternatives analysis, and that had, in one way or another, increased contributions toward the damage to the environment caused by these operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cirque. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Canty?
So Richie, you answered my first question, but I have two questions. So I'm going to ask you my second one. Do you currently have an opinion about the sand and gravel removal activity occurring in Plymouth beyond what you've already stated?
Yes. Is there another question?
That's the
I do have, I do have an opinion.
Okay, okay, good. So would you care to share it?
Certainly. I think that what's happening on Collins Avenue is terrible. I do, I do want to point out, though, that I've been at the site recently, and there is a concrete foundation being installed. It's not necessarily visible from Route 3, but it's being installed at the northern end of that property, which was on land recently acquired by the owner. And that seems to be the first step toward a reuse of that property for the light industrial purposes for which it's zoned. But it's an eyesore, and I have raised questions about it because part of the, part of the land that sand and gravel was removed from was owned by the Commonwealth. It was, and it was an intended rest stop. It was a pump-out from Route 3. It was envisioned as a, as a rent stop, but then when the Toadham Pole red stop was put in, this was unnecessary. But the, the owner of the land secured an easement, and then he secured a deed for the fee in that parcel that connected his land to the north of it, to the land on the south of it, thereby thereby removing any ability on the part of the town to do anything else with that. But having said that, it's a site that needs to be fixed. As far as South Plymouth is concerned, that's a terrible eyesore as well. I commend Mr. Peck for having voted against both sites, but even with a supermajority, you see, one vote isn't enough. But it's sad, because these two sites are the doorposts to the town from north and south. If you're coming from the south, you see the Cedarville site. If you're coming from the north, you see the Collins Avenue site. That's no way to welcome people to Plymouth.
Thank you, Mr. Serke.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Serke, you indicated that you served as an attorney. Did you ever petition any of the boards with the current bylaw?
Yes, yes. Of course, not when I was serving and not when to do so would have been a conflict of interest.
Right, but you had an opportunity to represent petitioners regarding the existing bylaw.
I do. I did.
During that experience, what was your frustration? Did you have a... Where did you see it being problematic? What was the challenge that you saw in front of the zoning board when you were petitioning them on this matter?
Well, putting on my petitioner's attorney's hat, there was often overwhelming opposition. I'm thinking of one case in particular from the neighborhood, which was represented by a pro bono attorney, and so they had no skin in the game. And no matter what was being proposed in the way of conditions on the part of my applicant, it was insufficient to satisfy them. They were just there to shut it down or to prevent it from being born. So that was one of my frustrations. The bylaw was not a problem, because I had the good fortune to represent people who were committed to complying with it. Others were not.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Serke.
Thank you.
Our last applicant for this committee is Mr. Hampton Watkins. Mr. Watkins, if you'd like to join us.
Thank you very much. Hampton Watkins, resident of Pine Hills, Ten Bridge Gate. I present myself as a candidate this evening, and I want to say I don't envy the choice that you're going to make. You have got a tremendous pool of talent and individuals who would be a credit to the town, to any town amongst the pool that you have this evening, even excluding me. I would very much say that you've got a real challenge in front of you. I am a recent resident of Plymouth, though I've been coming down here for 40 years during the summertime, every summer spending some time here and thoroughly enjoying the countryside, primarily of South Plymouth. I've owned a cabin there that's now closed up for the year on a pond, and that has been a sanctuary during the summer months, and since I've been retired, it's been a place that I have thoroughly enjoyed. My grandchildren and my daughter and her husband moved here in 2020. And I look at my two-year-old grandson and realize that when he's my age, he'll... It will be, or he's roughly my age, the year will be 2,100. And I want the town that we live in and that we enjoy and that has been here forever to be something that he could live in and enjoy just as much when he's my age. And I would hope that I could set a good example for him and his older sisters by service to the town. With that, I'll say that I serve on other town committees. I have been engaged progressively in both environmental as well as other activities in town. And I will say, too, that my technical background is something that I'll bring to the table. I have a bachelor's in chemistry, a master's in earth and planetary sciences, and a PhD in planetary sciences, plus roughly a dozen courses in sustainability and environmental management. So I've got a little bit of a technical background. I worked in the corporate world for about 35 years, having enjoyed the company for about two years with Mama Gaga, the mother of Lady Gaga. And so I have had all sorts of adventures and travels. I viewed new glacial landscape from the air in Alaska just a few years ago, and it's remarkable, when you look down on it, how you can see kettles in the glacial outwash. Those are valley glaciers. This is a continental glacier that we are standing on. The outwash from the glacier has provided abundant sand and gravel. It is progressively more valuable, if you look at the numbers. Sand and gravel used to go, pure sand, used to go for $5 a cubic yard. Now we're up to 16 or so. It's a very valuable commodity, used in the construction industry and road building and rather widely. It also provides the land form in which our aquifer exists, and we need to protect the aquifer. It's our sole source of fresh water, our drinking water, and will be forever. So it's critical that we look at this not in terms of what the near future brings, but in the terms of our grandkids, our great-grandkids, and so on, the generations to come. What we think of as good practice nowadays may not be necessarily good practice in decades to come, so we have to be conservative in what we do. I think that looking at other towns and what they do and how they manage the sand and gravel removal in their jurisdictions would be hugely informative, and I'd like to see that whoever the consultant is that's selected would be able to provide substantial input, both from a technical as well as a policy perspective, because I think that we need to be driven by an understanding of the... I'll call it the marketplace, the marketplace meaning where the trends are going with regard to the value of the commodity that we're dealing with. And finally, I think that the value to the environment of the cover on top of the sand and gravel can't be overstated. It's that first few feet of land cover, that thin layer of protection that the roughly 12,000 to 14,000 years of vegetation, growing and falling and decaying and regrowing over time, has built. That layer is tremendously important in protecting the sand below and the aquifer. So I think that all of these things need to be considered. Now finally, I think I said finally already, but I'll go one more. What I look at is not just the projects that have been approved, Collins and 71 Hedges Pond Road, but the ones that weren't approved. For example, the big PA Landers proposal to remove millions of cubic yards to build cranberry bogs down in South Plymouth. That, I think, was transparent enough so that it was like, no, you simply... This would remove a, I won't say 100 foot, but at least 60, 80 feet of sand down in eye-shot of Route 3 headed north on the east side of the road. I think that those sorts of projects, we have stopped, but we need to look more carefully at those that we haven't and see if we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Beyond what you've already touched upon, do you currently have an opinion about the town's existing earth removal bylaw, and if so, what is it?
Yeah, I do have an opinion. I think that it needs to be revisited, and I'll say, having spoken with several builders and previously with Mr. Morrison about the needs of agriculture, that it is the case that maybe the by rights need to be increased somewhat, I'll say slightly. But at the same time, as you go beyond that, I like the idea that I heard earlier about requiring special permits and other considerations to go into the mix. Not wanting to go too far. The other thing is, I think that the idea that I have spoken of publicly is cash bonding. I think that cash bonding could help to curb some of the, let's say, less desirable behavior.
Okay, thank you. And beyond what you've already touched upon, do you currently have an opinion about the sand and gravel removal activity occurring in Plymouth, and if so, what is it?
I think that there were, as was indicated earlier, some mistakes made with regard to 71 Hedges Pond. And I have been, because of where I live and where my grandkids, my extended family lives, I buy that site quite regularly. I was at RICO the other day when I saw a truck departing. Today, I thought I saw some land cover being spread on top of the sand that has been excavated at part of the site. I don't know that for sure. It was just a passing look. So I think that we can do better in managing, and I think that the other that was said was, we've got to tighten up enforcement and look carefully at the language, because language does count, and incidental to the primary use is wide open for interpretation and has resulted in what we see today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Ayacuanto?
Mr. Watkins, for the final time tonight, I will ask this question. What will success look like to you?
Success will look like something that is more balanced than we have today. One of the things that I've been pondering is, should there be in an earth removal bylaw a sense that we are changing the landscape? For centuries, we didn't change the landscape. One of the great buildings in town is at the other end of the current structure in which we are occupants, the 1820 Courthouse. The hill was not flattened to build that courthouse. The hill remains, and we have built this extension, this new town hall, into the hill, and certainly, we did have to remove some earth, but we did that with mechanical devices. For three centuries, we didn't have that in the town of Plymouth, so we built with the landscape. And I think that success would have us return, at least in some measure, to building with rather than exploiting from.
Mr. Cohen?
I guess you've answered most of my questions through your explanation, but if there's one thing reviewing the current bylaw, is there a component that you would like to see, if there was one priority, what would that priority be in changing the bylaw?
My take would be some requirement, whether it's bonding or some backend penalty, that if you make a proposal and your proposal is approved and you don't follow what you have proposed and you change in mid-course... And I recognize that economics of various situations can influence decisions that were made at one point in time and need to be changed at another. But somehow, we have to say, timeout, you can't build a solar field on top. You can't... Or if you do, we have a bond to say, you know, you will forfeit this if you do this.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Thank you.
All right, so we have three one-year terms to appoint. That means each of you will get three votes. So I'll go through and ask each member who their three votes are for.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir?
I applied for the position...
Can you come to the microphone, sir?
Good evening. I'm not sure why my name is not on the list of the applicants that you questioned.
Mr. Zuckerman, we don't have any application materials for you. I do understand that you applied to both the...
I filed it.
I understand that you applied to the COPC position and the planning board position, but not to the one that's appointed by the select board.
Yes, I spoke to CIPC, but I thought I applied for the select board.
No, you did not, unfortunately. We don't have application materials for you, so we cannot consider your application. The planning board does have your application materials, though, and they will be able to consider it when they meet.
So I cannot apply for all three?
You could have, but you didn't.
Okay. I don't know what happened, but I would like to say...
Sir, we don't have a public comment period at this point in time, and you're not one of the applicants, so I'm gonna ask that you take your seat.
So I cannot speak?
No.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we have three votes each. I will start with Mr. Cohen. For whom do you vote?
Hampton Watkins. Ed Conroy. And Scott McMillan.
Thank you. Mr. Quinto?
David Peck. And Hampton Watkins.
Thank you. Mr. Canty? Mr. Canty.
Scott McMillan. Walter Morrison. Richard Serke.
Ms. Ayquinto.
Scott McMillan, David Peck, and Hampton Watkins.
And I vote for Mr. Conroy, Mr. McMillan, and Mr. Watkins. So Mr. McMillan and Mr. Watkins both have four votes. Congratulations on your appointment. And Mr. Conroy has three votes. Congratulations on your appointment as well. Thank you to all the applicants, and we look forward to seeing the work that you produce. Thank you. All right, we'll move along to the historic district commission appointments. We have five applicants. All of them are registered voters of Plymouth. We are going to be appointing two three-year terms for that category. We do have one two-year term for American Institute of Architects, and we didn't have any applicants in that category, Jade. Okay, so we'll re-advertise that then? Excellent, thank you. Our first applicant is Liz Tracy. Ms. Tracy, if you wouldn't mind joining us at the podium.
My voice is so quiet, so I have to go closer. My name's Liz Tracy. I grew up in North Plymouth, went to hedge school, PCIS, and Plymouth South High School. I absolutely love history. I think my love for history started in third grade with Mrs. Gregory, where she had us build these little peublo Indian adobo houses. We built them out of straw, sand, and mud. It was real fun, with like little sticks and stuff. So when I got home, you know, asking my family, what's our house made out of? Horsehair, wood, jingles, everything. We didn't need the heat protection as, so they needed down in Mexico. So I'm thankful that we protect our homes and our historic preservation here, partly because a thousand years ago, the Tahoe's Peublo Village was established, and it's still there. There's a hundred and fifty people that still live without water and without electricity down there, which is really, really cool. So I think when our area was established, we started out, and this is what we have for our history in Plymouth. We have, you know, all the downtown historic districts, all the cool history from the Mayflower. North Plymouth, too, I know that's a new one, but we have a lot of history in North Plymouth that's really cool, the houses, the architecture. And I think that in a thousand years from now, I think the future of Plymouth is going to be really thankful that we saved our history and our structures. And we're also, I think, I'm thankful that they don't, they're not as strict as Mexico, and they don't actually, you know, they actually have running water and electricity. So we only look at the outsides of the houses, which is kind of fair and nice, because who wants to live with no running water nor electricity? But that's how our civilization has advanced and with technology. So my point of joining is, I love our town. Like, I absolutely love our streets. I love when you look at a house and, as Bill Fournschar, you ask him about a house and its history, and instantly, he can find anything you know about the, you know, he can tell you the history, when it started, who lived there. And I always appreciate that someone can remember the history and honor the history. And then when you drive by that house, you have a story to tell. There's a history and a light about that area. And I feel that about our historic preservation for our town. I think it's important for the future. I think it's important for our ancestors, the settlers that came here and created all the streets. And the Mayflower brought a lot of settlers over that advanced and spread out along Plymouth into North Plymouth, into South Plymouth, creating all these different little areas and villages. And we preserve only two sections so far, very small little fifty-nine properties on Bradford Street. And I'm not sure how many the historic district in downtown has, but it's beautiful, and I'm thankful. I love living in Plymouth, and I think I can't think of anything else other than helping my town out for the future, so generations to come can enjoy what we get to enjoy, history and our civilization. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Questions from the board? Mr. Cohen?
I think, having grown up in Plymouth, as you explained in your experiences in the educational system and growing up around the history of Plymouth, that's something that's motivated myself and my passion for history. Obviously, limited my institutional discipline on the matter, but I do have a passion for it. So what was the passion that brought you to this point where you wanted to serve on this board? Obviously, this board is addressing history. You're talking about your life experiences in Plymouth, but is there anything you can speak to where you saw something that we could have done better?
I, well, two years ago was when it came about, when I became interested in more of town history, was when we lost one of our cottage homes. We lost it on Spooner Street, South Spooner Street. It's demolished, it's gone. There's no more history in that house anymore. You just drive by and it's, it's not as big as I thought it was going to be. They didn't do a terrible job. I actually like it, and it's not bad, but it was part of a whole industry that built Plymouth, that built North Plymouth, just like the settlers built Plymouth in the beginning. And the histories, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for what our ancestors and settlers before us did. So I think we owe it to them for the beautiful place that we live, to preserve parts of it that bring you back to that area, so you have something. Like, when you go to Mexico and you visit, you know, the Tahoe Peublos, that's what you go there for. You come here, you see the history of the industries and the Mayflower, and as we learn more about history through social media and, you know, different areas of town spread their history, I look forward to it. I'm kind of a history nerd in that sense.
Thank you very, yeah, thank you very much.
Other questions? Mr. Canty.
If you were to be appointed to this commission, is there anything that the commission is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything that they're not currently doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
No, I'm looking forward to seeing what the other, the historic commission, that's just good. I'm looking to see how that balances each other out. I have no complaints. I've sat in front of them before, and I appreciated their help and what they, when they sat down and talked to people, and I sat through a few things that they did, and they were very helpful to people. They were very helpful with, you know, what they can use for materials, and I like the way they run it. So I don't think so. I don't think there's anything specifically that I can think of. I appreciate what they do, and I like it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ayquinto.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tracy. So it sounds like you've attended some of the historic district commission meetings?
Yes.
Okay, and what do you see as their priority? What do you think their main focus is?
Well, they got the Bradford area now, so it's even more. It's a lot more to take care of. I think I see them having a bigger load. I think it's going to be a lot busier adding those on, and I'm interested to see how that plays out and works. I'm hoping it's smooth. I'm hoping it's not tough for the people in the other area and getting appointments and, you know, coming in to see them. But I hope to be somebody that can help if they need advice on something, and I can directly, you know, direct people how to make improvements on the exterior of their homes that honor the history of our town and that type of stuff. I hope to, I'm hoping to find grants somewhere for these historic things. There's got to be some things out there to help people out that, as we go forward with historic preservation and material costs go up, and everybody wants to be cost-effective and budget-friendly. So I'm hoping I can make a difference somewhere in the historic preservation area field, I'm hoping. I don't know if that comes across as my, what I'm saying, but I hope so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Tracy.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Ryan Vayo. Mr. Vayo, please join us at the podium.
Good evening, thank you. Ryan Vayo. I've been on the historic district commission for, I think, coming up on four years now, three or four. I was just here not that long ago, doing the same thing, so I'll try to keep it short, but I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the board. I think that my personal experience, I am the co-owner of a custom-owned building company, and we've worked a lot with historic districts in multiple towns and certainly specialize in traditional New England architecture. It's pertinent to the board, especially given the current mix of our board. We just closed out a house, actually, in Hingham today that we work with the historic district up there on. I think that brings a certain perspective that we need to keep on the board right now, and I would love to continue serving on the board.
Questions? Mr. Canty.
So if you were to be reappointed, is there anything that the commission is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything that they're not currently doing that you'd like to see them start doing in your next term?
I would certainly like to see us continue at least efforts to expansion, whether that means spot districts or hold districts, dependent on different neighborhoods' appetite for the expansion, but at least efforts in that direction. And not doing, this may be more of improving on, because we have been doing some of it, but I would say outreach and working with the specific needs of different residents, specifically within that, I would say exercising discretion. For example, if you live on Leyden Street, I think fiberglass gutters or copper gutters should be the only option, and that should be understood. But somebody who, you know, lives in a vinyl-sided colonial in one of the new districts that we're expanding to certainly shouldn't be held up from doing aluminum gutters and incur more costs than they need to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Vayo, there's been some recent talk about the facade restoration program for downtown Plymouth, and it's something interesting that they're revisiting, because back in the nineteen-eighties, there was a facade restoration program here in the town of Plymouth implemented by the Office of Community Development. It was something that the town did operate in. And it's an idea of helping people within downtown Plymouth to help with their facades, but obviously, they're falling in the historical district. You know, the facade restoration program in the historical district and the requirements of that, do you see that, that, how do you see those two coming together?
I think, I think it's a great idea to start with, for sure. There's a lot of facades that definitely need it. Personally, I think the spire is some of the best money that the town's spent in years. I think probably the biggest, I won't say hurdle, but avenue that we would have to work with people on is obviously material and options that would be given to those people, especially if we're talking about public funds and cost being a consideration. So in my mind, that would be dependent on the specific location, how historic it is. I think back to the discretion aspect of this, we need to make sure that we exercise our discretion to preserve the historic value of everything, but keep the stricter requirements to buildings that deserve it.
Just one last question. Just any frustrations? I know you've been on the board for four years, and you've been focused and attentive. Obviously, you've seen the strengths and weaknesses of the process. Is there anything that you saw that frustrated you on the board that you would like to see improved?
Nothing major. I think we could always do a better job of being more of a part of a solution for everybody that comes before us, instead of just saying no in certain circumstances, helping come up with an alternative.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Vayo.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Deborah Brown. Is Deborah here tonight? Is she online? Excellent. Hello, Ms. Brown. If you could unmute yourself.
Hello, how are you?
Could you get a little closer to your microphone, please?
Yes. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
We can, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, great. Sorry about that, and thank you. My name is Deb Brown, and I've lived in Plymouth here for twenty-nine years now. And actually, I've always had a deep appreciation for Plymouth's place in American history, and it was actually a determining factor when we started to look at homes. Living here was always very important to me. I have an undergraduate degree in American Studies, and I've always been drawn to the way that really the local stories help to shape our national identity, and Plymouth truly offers a really especially meaningful context for that work. Professionally, my experience has been as a strategic sales exec for nearly twenty years now, working with Fortune 500 organizations, and that's really helped me to build strong skills in communication, partnership development, and project coordination. And those are some of the traits that I really help, that I really believe would help add value to the commission's initiatives. I, you know, being a working mom full-time, my daughter is a young adult now, and my work schedule has always been so busy that I've had limited opportunity to work in the community around historic preservation. My first foray into doing that was when Randy Parker began the committee to help with the Symes House and preserve that, and I joined and volunteered there for sort of those early phases of that project. The other thing that I'm particularly interested in supporting is really helping the efforts to really maintain the richness and the integrity of our historic district. And I know there's the expansion project ongoing, but I also know that there's other places outside of that, and have learned, too, of other spots, sort of the parting ways, for example. We had someone that was a director of that organization, this was several years ago, come to our family reunion that we had, that we held at Plymouth Plantation, and had him come and speak about another aspect of the richness of the history that makes up this town. So again, with that said, I think some of the skills and strengths that I could help bring to the commission is, again, strong communication, strategic planning, the ability to build partnerships and work effectively with, you know, diverse groups, lots of residents, businesses, community members, and really help to synthesize information, and really just be a team member and a team player to help accomplish the goals of the commission.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Canty.
Ms. Brown, if you were to be appointed to the commission, is there anything that the commission is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything that they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
Yeah, I think that it's, I think it's exciting that there's going to be an expansion of the historic district. And again, I also think that there's, even outside of the historic district, that there are places, for example, there was an antique store on 3A here in Manomet, and I learned that it was actually part of the Underground Railroad, and it was sold to a private buyer. So really, understanding and uncovering maybe other opportunities for us to expand the commission or protect historical structures in places, maybe not even a structure, but a place, I think that's important. And I also think, too, even in my professional work, it's really helping the businesses and the residents and sort of helping them to streamline the process, maybe doing, understanding what some of the, some of the obstacles might be, and maybe helping that to be more friendly, to really help create a better experience for both the residents and the businesses that the commission interacts with.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ayquinto.
You're welcome.
Ms. Brown, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Have you had an opportunity to attend any of the historic district meetings?
I- I have not at this point, and, and one of the things that I'm really looking to do at this point in my life is to have a better work-life balance and really start to become more active in the community. My job, I traveled a lot, and even if I would be, had been interested in attending, it was always, it never failed that things would conflict with my work schedule, so I have not.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Our next applicant is Mary Patricia Johannison. Is she in the room? Is she online? All right. Our final applicant is Connor Tilton. Is Connor in the room? Is Connor online? All right. Well, that concludes our list of applicants. So for this one, we have two three-year terms to appoint for registered voters of Plymouth. I'll ask each member to cast their two votes in turn. I'll start with Ms. Ayquinto.
Liz Tracy and Ryan Veo.
Can you put your microphone on?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Liz Tracy and Ryan Veo for the two three-year terms.
Excellent. Mr. Canty?
Liz Tracy and Ryan Veo.
Mr. Quintal?
Liz Tracy, Ryan Veo.
And Mr. Cohen?
Liz Tracy and Ryan Veo.
And I cast my votes for Liz Tracy and Ryan Veo. You each have five votes. Congratulations on your appointment, and thank you for your application as well, Ms. Brown, and to the other applicants. Please make sure you get sworn in with the town clerk. Our next committee appointments are for the Little Red Schoolhouse. We have one two-year term and one three-year term. I'll ask that the applicants indicate in their remarks whether they prefer the, the two-year term, the three-year term, or if they're open to either the two-year or three-year term. Our first applicant is Pamela Abel. Is Pamela in the room? Please join us up at the podium, Ms. Abel.
My name is Pamela Abel. I am an resident of Plymouth for the last 10 years, so I've called it home. I've raised my children here. Professionally, I am a fractional executive and a board advisor. I also sit on the Plymouth Little League Board, and several years ago, I did serve on the Cultural Council as well for a three-year term. And when I saw this opportunity come up for the Little Red Schoolhouse, I thought it was a great time to be able to get back into the community. I do have the capacity now to be able to do that again. I did take a little bit of a break, and I thought it was a great opportunity. I live in Valleysville technically, but Manomet and Cedarville, I kind of call my home in that little area there, and we're always around the area with the Little Red Schoolhouse. And I absolutely love it. I think it's great. It's such an important part of the community, having it there, being able to do events and just keeping that going, but most importantly, I think, awareness of that too. Not a lot of people know that you can utilize it. And so I think having that and being part of the board to be able to share that message would be fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Canty?
If you were to be appointed to this committee, is there anything that the committee is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
Yeah, I think that communication and awareness, I'd love to see more of that. I think getting it out there, letting folks understand and know what the Little Red Schoolhouse is all about, that it's available for the, the public, for the community to be able to use, and so having that be out there and just do more awareness in social media, whatever it be, you know, I know they have a bit of a following, I'm on there as well, but I think there's some more that can be done there.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Abel. Have you had an opportunity to attend any of the committee meetings?
I have not. I was just aware of this opportunity about a couple of months ago when I think I first applied.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Mr. Cohen?
As a fellow Valavillian, I don't know what it's called, but as a, as a summer resident of Valleysville, I got a kick out of you noting that, that it's not known as a village. It's very, one of the smallest villages in Plymouth. The Little Red Schoolhouse, have you been able to attend any of their meetings, follow any of their procedures? Obviously, they have been, you know, you know, kind of at different times, the town is at different positions with the building. Obviously, the committee is important to, to alert the, the town in, in the, in the conditions of the building. But is there anything there you can think of that during that process that you were aware of that motivated you to put your name in for this?
Sure. So I haven't been able to attend any of those meetings specifically. I have attended events there, and so been there, I've been part of it, I've seen it. So that's just, you know, having something historical in the town and something there in our community that is just so important, I think, to keep that richness, that's what Plymouth is all about, and having that there, I think is just incredible. And so being able to learn more about what the committee does, be part of it, and help to keep the Little Red Schoolhouse in the community is important.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Our next applicant is Terry McKenna. Ms. McKenna, I just asked, come on up, I just asked that while you were out of the room, if applicants could indicate whether they prefer the two-year term, the three-year term, or either.
Well, I'm the one who screwed up, so the three-year term. So I'd be with the people I should have been with. The Little Red Schoolhouse is very important to me. It's in my blog. I've been associated with since 1979 when the town bought it and saved it from a bulldozer. I do a lot of things there. What do you want to know? You all know me. I don't know how to sell myself, so ask me a question, I'll sell myself.
Are there questions? Mr. Canty?
Hi, Terry.
Hi, Kenny.
If you were to be, I guess in your case, reappointed, you know, in some regards, to this committee, is there anything that the committee is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything that they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
Well, though I wasn't reappointed, I really never left the committee. I've been still doing, I open it for all the groups, run the blood drives. We're planning Christmas tree lighting on December 6th, you're all invited. It's going to be big, you know, cookie, the whole thing. So I'd like to see more activities for children, hopefully I can get the other guys on board with me, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cohen?
Terry, obviously you've been involved in this actively since the reconstituting of the committee. During that process, can you speak to any successes that you feel that we've had and things that you'd like to see happen in the future?
Well, our big success as a committee is our Christmas tree lightings. The whole community comes out. It's awesome, even have the fight department, you know, kicking. The blood drives are really big in the community. I have a lot of repeat, so that's a good thing. And yeah, we're doing a good job.
Is there something you'd like you to see, to think that you'd like to see done in the future? Is there?
Like, like I said before.
If you had a wish list?
I'd like to have more children things involved, like a movie night and stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Our final applicant is Mr. Mark Thompson. Mr. Thompson, if you could please join us at the podium.
Thank you. My name is Mark Thompson. I live at 1148 Long Pond Road, directly across the street from the Red Schoolhouse. Actually had a nice spiel prepared, but my, on my phone, but it just died. Things went longer than I thought they were going to go tonight. But anyways, I've been, I was a member of the original committee when it was reconstituted, and I've enjoyed my time as a committee member very, very much. And I did it originally to, just to make sure that that, I wanted to be involved originally just to make sure that, that the committee, that the schoolhouse continued to be the historical place of meeting that it is. And we've done, we've done some, some good work there, and Terry mentioned the Christmas tree lighting, and we recently had a birthday party for the schoolhouse, and all very well attended. And, you know, there's, and I, because I live across the street, every day I see an activity there, almost, almost every single day. And everything from the vets clinic to AA, multiple AA meetings, it's well-used by the community, and I just want to make sure that I can do whatever I can to help it, to continue to be available to the committee and as the valuable resource it is. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Canty?
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, if you were to be reappointed to the committee, is there anything the committee is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything they're not doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
I, I think we should continue to find other ways to reach out to other groups that might want to use the commi, the, the schoolhouse as a meeting place, which we've done in the past. We've gotten the Water Set Association, the Wapanoa Indian Group, and others, and so we want to do that. But I also, I want to make sure that we do whatever we can to get the building designated as, somehow as a historical structure, so that it, it can't be messed with by future board members that might have different ideas than you guys. And so I'd like to protect the building and make sure that it stays in town ownership and in used by, and maintained and used by the committee, community.
Did you say whether you wanted a two-year term or a three-year term?
Well, my term originally, before I got caught up in the not swearing-in thing, was to expire in 2027, and the communications I got from the town said, which term did you want to, they didn't say how many years, but the, the term I want to complete is the 2027 term, which I believe that's a three-year term that started in '24, but I don't, I don't know.
This one would be two years starting now, well, it would end in 2027.
Right. The two years, I'd be happy with the two-year appointment. I think Terry would like to stay longer.
Sounds, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cohen?
You talked about protection and, and keeping it within the, the realm of the town for, you know, so not to fall to the whim of a future board in, in terms of, at one point, they were looking to dispense of it, and you speak of protection and designation. Have you thought of any other, what form would that, you, would that take?
My words are failing me right now, but.
Right.
I just, I just drew a, a senior moment, sorry.
No, that's okay. No, I, no, I, when you were speaking to this idea of protection in, in not, the board, the building not falling to future whims of a board, that it falls into a situation, I, I think, I know that you've worked hard on that, I was just thinking.
Yeah, we had, we had someone from the town come down, and they're doing, going to do a historical evaluation of the building, and some kind of designation as a, as an officially historic building that can't be done away with, without, I would like to see it so that it's taken away from the power of the board and left to town meeting, if there's ever going to be any disposal of the school building. I'd like to, I'd like to see it protected like that, you know, a little, a little extra layer of protection then, just the goodwill of the board.
As you know, I've acted as the liaison to the committee and have been participating in your meetings, so I was just trying to touch on some of the things that you're currently working on. But thank you very much, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a, a one-year term, excuse me, one two-year term and one three-year term. There's only one person who expressed a strong preference for the three-year term, so why don't we start there? Is there a nomination for someone to fill the three-year term?
Make a nomination for Terry McKenna.
Excellent. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Excellent. Any discussion? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations, you've been appointed to the three-year term. Please get sworn in by the town clerk. We have two applicants then for the two-year term. Do I have a nomination for the two-year term?
Make a nomination for Mark Thompson.
Is that seconded?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Are there any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Quintal?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, congratulations, Mr. Thompson, you've been appointed. Please get sworn in by the town clerk, and thank you, Ms. Abel, for your application. Hopefully, we see you again in the near future. Our final appointment tonight is for the Senior Task Force Committee. Mr. Robert Leonard has withdrawn his application. Gabrielle Patri, Pachi is not able to join us tonight. She is online. Sorry if I butchered your name, but please unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the board.
Great. My name is Gabriel Pachi. I live at 20 Hydrangea Lane in the Red Brook community. My video or audio okay now?
Yep, you're good.
Good, thank you. So I am only a 16-month resident of Plymouth, but I will tell you, I'm here because I have a son and three grandchildren that live in Barnstable, and being close to them right now was one of the most important things for me. Let me start with the most important, continue on that, and that's I have three amazing children. I have a daughter who lives in Santa Rosa, California, who's an orthopedic surgeon. I have a son who teaches fifth grade at the Shanghai American School in Shanghai, China. And by the way, my daughter has three of my grandkids, three boys, Romeo, Otis, and Molly, and the two grandchildren here, Eva and Luka. So that's probably what I, everything that I do now is really about them, what I want my grandchildren to think as they grow in this world. So my experience, I come from a long history of involvement in the chemical industry, in operations. I've been in senior executive positions in, in that area. I built chemical plants in Rheinland in Germany, Barry, Wales. I've had a very exciting, interesting, fun career. I think I've never had a, a job that I didn't like, which is amazing in itself. And upon retirement, I really wanted to continue to give, give back in a sense, but really lend my skills and experience to any organizations, mostly, not nonprofit, by the way, that needed them. I've participated, been, I spent 16 years on the board of Elliot Community Human Services. It's a large mental health provider in the state of Massachusetts with over 120 facilities. I served as chair in the last, my last three years with the organization. I've served with the Massachusetts Society for the, for the MSPCC, the Society for Rangel and Children. It's late, and I've had this crazy chest cold all week, so that's why I couldn't be there in person, by the way. I've been involved with a lot of mental health organizations that deal especially with youth and seniors. I've been, since moving to Plymouth, I have also done some work with committees around Red Brook. I've also volunteered with, within Plymouth at the Plymouth North High School with their Allied Health Program, worked with the swap shop. There isn't much that I really, don't try to do. I'm a very active senior, by the way. I consider myself a superager. I am very much healthy in terms of mental, physical, and emotional. My need to me, for me right now is really, again, to give back, to help the community, help where I live, provide whatever assistance, whatever of my help where I live, provide whatever assistance, whatever of my skills that I have and experience for them to use. I'm passionate about some of the issues with, with senior living. I am one myself. I'm also a caretaker for a 94-year-old sister that lives with me. I understand a lot of the issues around physical, mental health and social, the importance of social activity for seniors. I want to see us expand the strategy of helping seniors in areas, volunteerism, for instance, how do we get seniors involved more in some of these town committees, town activities? It's a very important part of getting older. So that, that's the reason for my applying to have a place on this board. I'll entertain your questions, seeing it's very late, I'll, I'll keep it right there.
Questions from the board? Mr. Canty?
If you were to be appointed to this committee, is there anything the committee is currently doing that you'd like to see them continue doing? Or anything that they're not currently doing that you'd like to see them start doing?
To be totally candid, I have not participated in, in the committee or attended any of the meetings, so I'll be very honest with you. Again, I have ideas about what senior living can be like versus what it is now. The quality of life of seniors is extremely important, but I will give it my all. In every organization, board and committees that I've been involved with, and there are many, I've always been extremely active. I'm sort of a, yeah, strategic thinker, visionary in that sense. So I look forward to, to helping any way that I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pachi. Our next applicant is Sarah McDevitt. Is Sarah in the room? Is Sarah online? Okay. So we have one applicant who appeared before us virtually here tonight. I guess I'll just call the roll on Gabriel's candidacy. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations. Please get sworn in with the town clerk. All right, we'll move on to the town manager's report. Mr. Brindisi?
Great, thank you. So I want to start to just provide an update to the board regarding the Burt's property. I know it's been mentioned by Mr. Serkey the last couple of weeks and I promised him that I would provide the board an update this evening. So I had the opportunity to speak with Attorney Sims on Friday to try to get a better sense of, you know, his client and their willingness to demolish the building. What I learned during those conversations is that those two items that was really holding up the demolition of the structure. One, we were waiting to get certification regarding the final capping of the septic system and that certification needs to go to the Health Division for final sign-off. That's been accomplished effectively Friday. And the other piece was, was what I mentioned last Tuesday, that when the contractor went through the building, they, they did identify that there was asbestos inside the building. So as we all know, asbestos is, has this material, it needs to be removed by licensed contractors. That did take place, in fact, that took place, the remediation took place on October 31st. So those two items have been resolved. I was hoping to get a, a notice today by Attorney Sims as to the final determination of when the structure was coming down. He, he didn't have a final date. He did say that he's hoping within the next seven to 14 days, the building would come down. So I'm hoping by, in the next couple of days, we do have confirmation from Attorney Sims on the final demolition date. If not, I will be working with town council and I will be working with the building commissioner on taking any further necessary legal action against the property owner. So I'll move on to other updates, moving on to some DPW project updates. The Long Pond Road, halfway Pond Road intersection, as we all know, the, the road has been widened, the striping has been complete. We have been waiting for the last couple of months for the signals to arrive. Those have arrived. Those are now with the contractor. We have been told that the installation of those signals will take place late next week. Once that final phase of the project is complete, given that this is new signalization at that intersection, we're going to keep those signals on flash for two to three weeks, just so folk, especially the ones that live in that area, they get used to the signal. So again, two or three weeks, we'll keep it on flash mode. And then in the same area, Clock Road and Pine Hills Drive, you, as you all know, there's been a lot of traffic improvements over there as well. This, the traffic signals have been completed on that intersection, effectively on November 21st, so that's going to make that area of town a little bit more efficient as far as traffic movement. I want to recognize Tiffany Parker, grant writer, and Chad Hunter, who as you all know is a harbor master, for receiving a port security grant. This is a $155,000 federal grant and it is to strengthen the security of our harbor, specifically in Town Wharf, by purchasing radios and security cameras and new safety barriers. So congratulations to those two. I just want to remind folks, I mentioned this last week, that if anyone is interested, especially those watching at home, if they're interested in a free Thanksgiving meal, whether it's for themselves or for a loved one, please contact Roxanne Whitbeck. She is our Veteran's Services Officer. She's working very closely with the VFW to prepare meals and to make sure that everybody has a, a warm Thanksgiving dinner this coming Thursday. If you're interested, please reach out to Roxanne at 508-747-1620. And then I just want to mention that the Board of Health held a public forum, I had mentioned this last week, around the issue of kratom. Kratom is an ingredient that we're starting to find in drinks in our convenience stores. So they're, like tonight, they had over 20 testimonies, some four in supporting kratom. They think that it has some type of health benefit. Others are worried about the negative effects that, negative health consequences of kratom. So the Board of Health will continue to explore what's taking place statewide as it relates to this ingredient in soft drinks, so more to come on that. And then I just wanted to mention that as we prepare for the holiday season, those of you who do business in Town Hall, we are planning to close for the Friday after Christmas. So Christmas is on a Thursday this year, so December 26th, we're typically open for four and a half hours on a Friday. So we will be closed, Town Hall will be closed, and I'll be working with the other departments as well, at the library and the, and the Cal, to determine whether or not they'll be closing on that date as well. And then I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and hopefully they can enjoy the time away and can be with their families. Any, any questions? That's all I have.
Questions from the board?
I have one.
Mr. Quinto?
Mr. Brindisi, will we be having a contest this year for holiday decorations throughout the building?
Holiday decorations? I haven't, are we doing that this year, Sylvia? I haven't heard we're doing holiday decorations.
We had, we treated one department, maybe it was a couple, because it was a few ties, but I think we need to reinstate that.
I will have to check with the Employee Engagement Committee on, on the holiday decoration competition.
And we'll treat the.
So you plan on treating the winner?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, then that's a challenge.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the challenge. So we'll have to put that challenge out to all the different departments, that you'll be treating that one department to a free lunch, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yeah, you are, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Quinto.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Moving on to select board discussion, any new business? Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes, so I have a, I have a comment and a request that I'm making totally in the spirit of continuous improvement, okay? So we've spent the last few months talking about concerns with agenda management and I think we've made some changes, but I don't think we're there yet. So I'm going to look back even just at last week. Last week we had a couple of surprises on the agenda. One, one landed us in the news again. And for example, the Berkeley family's bench request was approved as an administrative note, no discussion, rather than going to the Memorial Advisory Committee, which was my understanding, was that was where it was supposed to be headed, was to the Memorial Advisory Committee, but instead we had it in the administrative notes. And people noticed that and I got a couple of emails and calls about that too, wondering about the, the precedent that that set and, and different things like that. Not that we would begrudge the family their, you know, their opportunity to memorialize those boys. I would never do that. It's just the process that I think we're questioning. We also, last week, got a great informative update on our climate adaptation programs, which would have been fine, except that the board member who had requested it had asked for a strategic discussion about how budget cuts may affect our progress in certain areas. And now that, that conversation will come back to us, that, that team will come back to us and have the conversation that was originally requested. So I was thinking about that this week and it made me look at the list of items that we've been, that we, we now have, and I think this is, this is good progress. So we now have a list of all the items that we requested to be put on the agenda, but there are no dates attached and we've had this list now for several weeks. And many of these are strategic topics that are tied directly back to our goals and priorities that we set this summer, that we all agreed to. So just a couple of them, like staffing in the Planning and Development Department, a new economic development model, improving the regulatory process for businesses, public safety staffing, all of these are things that we've, we agreed were important priorities for us to address. We've asked for them to be put on the agenda and they're, they're on a list, but there's, there's nothing attached to them yet, no dates. And we've also, at the same time, we have items that the community has been asking for for months, like the land acknowledgement and like how we ensure due process when working with ICE. So these are obviously, these are, I'm talking about priorities that we set as a board are important for the town and priorities that the community is telling us is important to them. And when I look at upcoming agendas, I don't see any of these discussions scheduled yet. So there's a line item for economic development with no context. So all of this is kind of raising a question for me, and I imagine with other board members, about how our priorities are being set. And I don't think it's intentional, that's why I'm offering this in the spirit of continuous improvement, but it does create, create the appearance that some of the items that are being requested are being filtered or watered down. And it looks to the residents, I think, like that we are avoiding complex or controversial topics, which I know is not something that we want to do as a board. So I do have a recommendation, I have an ask, and I wanted to ask whether the board would be open to creating sort of an agenda roadmap, I'm not quite sure what to call it, that would look out over the next few months. It would include all of the standing items that we know are coming, because we've got some stuff that is coming up that we can't, you know, the budget information, reviewing the warrant articles, all of those things we know are coming. But let's get those strategic discussions scheduled with clear descriptions with the, especially, you know, getting the input from the board member that's requested them. I think that would be really important. And then we can fill in with informational items that are also as important as space allows. So I really think that having that kind of a roadmap will help our meetings feel more intentional. Right now, to me, maybe I'm alone in this, but they're feeling a little ad hoc. We never quite know what we're going to get and we still have a lot of really important work to do. So I'm just putting it out there as a, as an idea. I'm happy to work this in whatever way, if anyone, if you, if you all agree that it's a good idea, I'm happy to take the lead or work with the chair and the town manager to help put that together or we could work in a workshop like we did with the policies and procedures and try to work on this together. But my comments, my ask, and I'll, I'll let it lie there.
Thank you for the feedback, Ms. Ayquinto. I'll speak with the town manager and loop back to you on that. Any other new business? Mr. Quinto?
Just a response to Ms. Ayquinto's concerns. I partially agree with it and I partially don't. We have board members on the board that sit and go on for hours and, yeah, it's a do right, but in respect of time, that happens time to time. We asked to get the packers done two weeks in advance, so after you get that all done, the board members come in here and they start asking more questions. What's the idea of getting a packet 12 days or, or two weeks in advance when you sit here and you ask after a presentation of a, of any kind of manager or department does a full presentation, then you ask to reschedule it because you have more questions? Why don't you look over your packet, get your information, call the department head, reach out to them, get your answers and let's move along? I think that's a lot of why we don't get forward progress here from where I'm sitting in the last, you know, few years that I've been here. It happens sometime, but it happens on this board more than it should. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Other new business? Mr. Cohen?
You know, in, in the recent past, we as a board have put together a workshop off campus, kind of trying to sort out some of the concerns that each of us have. I think that might be something that we might look at in the future, a possible secondary workshop, because the policies and procedures haven't been finalized and, and other things come up. So it might be something that we as a board might entertain in the near future, where we kind of spend some time kind of working on these issues dedicated to one night. So it's up to the board and what they think, but I think our first workshop was fairly successful and we might consider something like that in the near future.
Other new business? Mr. Canty?
I just agree with Mr. Cohen and Ms. Ayquinto and I think the idea of a workshop where we could all chime in on it and voice our opinions would be beneficial. So that would be my, I will join in their requests with my own. Thank you.
Any other new business? Letters? Mr. Cohen?
I think we all got a series of letters about Shallow Pond. Wasn't sure if those letters, each of us, I'm getting letters from the residents of Shallow Pond, ask, inquiring about the status of their roads. Obviously, this is a neighborhood that, that has been grappling with traffic-related issues to a 40B that is out beyond them. It's been approved, it's been permitted, it's moved forward, there's been a number of alterations to that 40B over the years and they are taking on a level of, of activity and that neighborhood requires us to kind of reach out and find out what the concerns are, what the town's, town is doing in terms of DPW and, and road acceptance. So I think that something that we might want to indicate back to the town as to the status of road acceptance as it relates to this location and if, if there is a possibility for an update in the future, that might be helpful.
I believe everyone did get those letters and I'm in discussions with the town manager as to how to move forward with that, that request. We did receive a positive recommendation from the Roads Advisory Committee, so we'll be taking next steps in the near future. Other letters? Old business, I have some. I don't think I was able to report back on this, but the vice chair and I recently met with Melissa Ferretti from the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe. We had a very productive discussion. The plan is to reconvene in December with town staff to talk about how we can move forward, some initiatives in support of the tribe and in relation to some of the requests that this board and other townspeople have made. So more to come on that in the near future. I also met twice, once with Mr. Cohen and once by myself with representatives from the Plymouth Together We Can group to discuss some of the concerns that the residents have regarding ICE operations in town. The, the meetings were very productive and we were able to share some information back and forth with one another. And in addition to that, I'm going to be meeting with town staff and I've invited Mr. Canty to join me for a meeting with the Attorney General's Office. That's going to be taking place on December 8th. So hopefully we'll have some more information from them, some guidance as to what the town can and can't do in regards to that topic. Any other old business? All right. Well, happy Thanksgiving to everyone in the community and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Canty makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ayquinto seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Ms. Ayquinto?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving. We are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving.